I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Welcome to the meeting of the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this meeting and all meetings of the board are open to the public and media consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act and that advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier News, the Star Ledger, Express Times, and the Hundred and County Democrat, and sent to the clerks of Delaware Township, East Amwell Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, and Reddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard as shown on the agenda. May we stand for a flag salute, please? We do have our welcoming three new board members who we will swear in very shortly to the Board of Education. All three are from Raritan Township. Welcome to Mrs. Susan Dugan, Mrs. Rebecca Peterson, and Mr. Jerry Reimer. Dr. Moore, would you like to read the district's mission statement, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mrs. Spitzer. Hundred and Central is an innovative educational community dedicated to the intellectual, social, and emotional safety and growth of all students. While fostering curiosity and promoting wellness, we aspire to create powerful learning experiences, establish strong partnerships, and serve as contributing members of society.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. May I have Mrs. Dugan, Mrs. Peterson, and Mr. Reimer, please come to the front carefully without falling off the stage so we can swear you in, please? They'd like to get your pictures as well individually. I'm going to swear you all in together. So if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Robert Davidson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I instate your name.
I, Robert Davidson.
Do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications of membership prescribed by law.
Do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications of membership prescribed by law.
Including specifically that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1.
Including specifically that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1.
As well as I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime or offense.
As well as I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime or offense.
Listed in NJSA 18A 12-1.
Listed in NJSA 18A 12-1.
I instate your name.
I, Robert Davidson.
Do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education.
Do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justfully perform.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
All the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
All the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, and congratulations. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the board president, please. Oh, where is it? Sorry. Mrs. Blutfeld, here. Mr. Davidson.
Here.
Mrs. Dugan. Here. Mr. Fowler.
Here.
Mrs. Hughes.
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg.
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Peterson.
Here.
And Mr. Reimer.
Here.
Thank you. And now, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for president of the Board of Education, please.
I'd like to nominate Lisa Hughes.
Second.
I'd like to second that.
Okay.
Any other nominations? Okay, I'm going to take a roll call for Mrs. Lisa Hughes as president for the Board of Education. Mrs. Blutfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Mrs. Dugan.
Yes.
Mr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes.
Sure, yes.
Mrs. Kellogg.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Reimer.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for your confidence. I look forward to serving as president for another year. I particularly thank the new members for confidence in electing me as president again, not even knowing me, so I hope I can serve the position well. So, thank you. I'd like to now open the floor for a nomination and election of a board vice president.
I'd like to nominate Dee Kellogg.
Have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Kane Fowler.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any other nominations for vice president? Okay, so we have Mr. Fowler and Mrs. Kellogg. Mrs. Spitzer?
We would need to take a written vote in front of you. You each have a piece of paper. If you would be kind enough to write your nomination on the piece of paper, and I will collect them.
Should we pass them your way?
Sure.
By paper ballot, I have a vote of five for Mrs. Kellogg, three for Mr. Fowler, and one abstention.
Congratulations to Mrs. Kellogg. I'm also.
Congratulations. Yep. So I just want to say that I have utmost respect for both Mr. Fowler and Mrs. Kellogg. I would have been more than pleased to work with either one of you as vice president, but looking forward to working with both of you in leadership positions on the board. Congratulations, Mrs. Kellogg, and grateful that you were nominated as well. Mr. Fowler. Okay, so we will move on to the code of ethics. Do I need a motion, Mrs. Spitzer, for that, to accept the following resolution?
Yes, please.
Yes. Can I have a motion to accept the following resolution? I'll read through it first. Be it resolved that the New Jersey School Boards Association Code of Ethics shall be considered the official code of ethics of the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education. The code of ethics is as follows. One, I will uphold and enforce all laws, state board rules and regulations, and court orders pertaining to schools. Desireed changes should be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. Number two, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools which meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. Number three, I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. Number four, I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run. Number five, I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action which may compromise the board. Number six, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interest or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. Number seven, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools, but in all other matters I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow board members interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools. Number eight, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer. Number nine, I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties. And number ten, I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and will act on such complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. So may I have a motion and a second to adopt that resolution, please?
Some more.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call vote, Mrs. Spitzer, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dugan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. Reimer?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll move to our first residence forum, which is for action items only on the agenda. If there's anyone who would like to speak on action items on the agenda, please come up to the podium, state your name and residency, and you will have five minutes to speak.
Do you need me to write my name on here?
Please, and you're the town in which you live.
Good evening. My name's Steve Farsio, Raritan Township resident. Some of you guys know me. About the agenda tonight, just noticing a few things. First of all, I want to congratulate the three new board members. I don't know who you guys really are, but I hope that you're here for the right reasons. And the thing that I can only say the most is ask questions. Ask questions and get both sides. Don't just assume that what's being told to you is the truth. I think it's very important tonight especially. I've been asked to come here before. I chose not to. I'm a graduate here in 1993. Love this place. It's not what.
Mr. Farsio, I don't mean to interrupt, but do you have a comment on an action item on the agenda?
I'm there. I'm going to get there.
Okay, because if not, we have a general comment section.
Yeah, I understand. I'm going to be there, too. My question and what I was saying with respect to the new members is that I want you guys to ask questions. I want you guys to find out exactly what's going on and not just assume that the information that's being provided to you is accurate. You have a big issue in this school, so you have a big obligation, and I think it's great that the code of ethics was discussed tonight. Six, seven, eight, nine, all of them, but six, seven, eight, nine, I hope you guys take to heart everybody and start really looking at what your obligations are. The superintendent doesn't run the school.
Mr. Farsio, again, I'm going to ask you to please direct your comments to action items on the agenda. There's a second residence forum, as you know.
I understand that.
Where you can make general comments and you're free to come back.
I understand that. I understand that. Is the code of ethics on the agenda?
It is not an action item.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Well, then, let's talk about an action item.
Thank you.
Okay, and tell me whether or not this is a good look. You have a math teacher that's going to be hired in March. You put her on the agenda for tonight. You have three new members who have no idea what the process was to hire this person, whom, by the way, may be a great candidate. Here's the problem with it. It's a person who was married to the former Board of Education president who gave a glowing recommendation for Dr. Moore, who got his second five-year contract. It's the daughter of a former Board of Education member that was just voted out. Does anybody think that that looks good? I mean, this school can't get out of its own way, and we're hiring people because this is what this school has done for the last 20 years. You guys got to fix it. You got to fix it, or the three people that got in, hopefully you guys do your job, and everybody else is going to get out, because this cannot happen anymore. It's a bad look, and everybody knows it's a bad look. And by the way, it's not fair to her, the candidate, because she may be a great candidate. I think I met her once. She's a nice lady. She could be a great candidate, but you guys have to start looking at optics here. And you have people, you're putting her at step 13, and I don't even know if she's been working for 10 years. You put her at step 13. I wonder what other people in the math department think. And then you guys wonder why your teachers are upset or why their atmosphere isn't that great. It's got to, you got to start, you got to start opening your eyes and listening to people.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has comments for items on the agenda? As I indicated earlier, there will be a second residence forum, as we normally have, for general comments later. So we have two organizational items. One is on the agenda and one is on the addendum. The first is for a motion to re-adopt all existing bylaws and policy, which is normal for this course for our reorganization meeting, first meeting of the year. So can I please have a motion to re-adopt all existing bylaws and policies in a second?
Some moved.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dugan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. Reimer?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you, Mrs. Spitzer. And the second organizational item, which is on the addendum, is just a motion to approve our board retreat on Saturday, January 21st. I've been in touch with the new board members and have let them know of that date and time, so can I have a motion, please, and a second to approve that date?
Some moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dugan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. Reimer?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you. We will move on to personnel. We did have our committee reports in December. We just have. Thank you. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the appointment under personnel?
Second.
Can I have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dugan?
Abstain.
Mr. Fowler?
Abstain.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Abstain.
And Mr. Reimer?
I, too, will abstain.
Motion carries five. Four.
Thank you, Mrs. Spitzer. We also, oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. We had two items under personnel. Sorry, I didn't see the second one. Do we need to?
You want to do it?
Do the vote. I apologize. I forgot we had two items. So the second item under personnel was an hourly appointment of a substitute bus driver, Vivian Fleming. So should we take the vote again, Mrs. Spitzer?
May I have a move in? Did somebody move in second?
So can I have a motion for personnel items one and two?
Or just two?
Or just for two? Okay, so we'll just vote on two. Can I have a motion for number two of personnel, please?
Some moved.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion about just number two on personnel? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dugan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Abstain.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Abstain.
And Mr. Reimer?
Abstain.
Motion passed six-three.
Thank you, Mrs. Spitzer. Okay, next we have additional business. Does anybody have any additional board business to discuss before we move into our second residence forum?
Sure.
At this point?
Yeah, we don't have to do any action.
Okay. So, new committee assignments. I will be working on those this week, and I will get them out to you, Mrs. Spitzer, in a couple of days. We have our four standing committees: Personnel, Student Life and Programs, Racism Equity, Diversity, and Operations and Transportation. We also have a new Communications Committee. So there will be assignments for each board member on one of those five committees. Some board members will probably have to serve on two. In addition, we have liaisons to different positions: School Boards Association, Polytech, I think the county bar, the county board, sorry, back to my lawyer days, the County Board Association, so those will be appointed as well. And, Mrs. Spitzer, I was going to ask, this year, would it be possible for your office to put together a list of contacts at all those organizations and possibly links to calendars of meetings so that the folks who are appointed liaisons to each of those organizations can have in front of them in an email who the contact person is and what the calendar of meetings are going forward for this year?
Yes.
That would be really helpful. Thank you. Okay, so we'll communicate that all out to the board by email this week. Any additional business by anyone else?
Yes, Mrs. Hughes, if I could.
Yeah, of course.
First, wanted to welcome the three new board members. Thank you for joining us and look forward to a good number of years together. Thank you for everybody else coming back and for taking the presidency and vice presidency positions, and welcome back to the new year to Central, the students, the administration, the staff. I know it's kind of just coming back from break and not a new year, but it's still a nice time to reflect on good spring to come and then a break in the summer and hopefully a great and positive experience as we build a new communications network with our community through this new committee that we're putting together and find new ways to bridge gaps from the past.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Yes?
Yeah, no, I want to echo your comments, Kane. I just want to welcome the new board members. Congratulations and welcome, and I look forward to, you know, working together and having a good, working relationship so that we can all function as an effective board together. So thank you for running and congratulations.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, we'll move into the second residence forum, which is for general comments. Again, same rules apply. We don't have too many folks here, so I guess we'll keep it to five minutes. So if there's anyone who would like to speak with general comments on items that are on or off the agenda, please step up to the microphone.
Do you want me to write my name now again?
I don't, I think it's fine. Thank you.
Okay, I'm joking.
Thank you.
Sure. I'm sorry? Steve Farsio. Steve Farsio from Raritan Township. And like I said before, I'm a graduate of Hundred and Central in 1993, and I wanted to just come here tonight, and I chose tonight because of the reorganization meeting, to discuss the issues that have been going on with respect to the Drag Queen Show. And I want to just let everyone know, as a lot of you guys know, I am an attorney, I'm a plaintiff's attorney. I represent a lot of people. I represent not just, I don't just represent businesses, I represent individuals. I represent gay people, trans people. I've represented them all against big businesses, against schools. So I know exactly what those kids deal with, because I've had several lawsuits to protect those kids. So there's no one here, and if there's anyone here or anybody ever comes up and says, hey, we need to get rid of the Pulse Club, I'm not with those people. I am not with them at all, and I will stand against them if that ever should happen here. I think the Pulse Club is awesome, and I think it's something that you guys should be proud of to have it here at the high school. The issue is not the Pulse Club. That's not the issue. And my biggest concern when I sat back and watched these meetings was the fact that you had people coming up here making arguments about, this was about people hating gay people, trans people. That's not what the argument was about. The argument was about your judgment, Dr. Moore. That was the argument. And you guys had an opportunity, you have an obligation, you have an obligation to stop division and confusion. And you guys could have easily said, hey, by the way, not one person, and maybe there was one, maybe there was one or two, but from what I saw from people standing up here, no one came up here and said, hey, we got to get rid of the Pulse Club, or gay people, trans people, or people who are not like us need to get out of here. Nobody argued that. What they argued was your judgment. That's what they argued. You guys should have said something, because you have people up here thinking that that's the issue. You have national attention thinking that the issue is that the kids in Hundred and Central have a problem with trans and gay kids. That's not the issue. There's always going to be kids that have either bad intentions, that's never going to, that's never going to go away, but with respect to the Drag Queen Show, that wasn't the issue. Yet you guys sat there and you didn't say a word. You didn't say a word. In fact, Dr. Moore, you came out and you told everybody that our boys' soccer team were racist. Don't say you didn't. I saw the email. You did.
Mr. Farsio, please keep, direct your comments to the board.
Mrs. Hughes, I'm going to direct you to Besler versus West Windsor Board of Education. It's a case law that permits me to stand up here. I am not attacking anybody. I am, I'm a taxpayer.
I'm not telling you, you can't. I'm not telling you, you can't stand up here. I'm telling you, according to our policy, all public comments are directed to the board president.
That's fine.
So please just direct your comments to me.
I go by what the case law tells me I can do. So I don't really, your policy can say whatever it wants, but I'm going by the case law. And the fact of the matter is, I can't even get this guy to look at me. He's looking at his phone, looking at everything else.
Looking at your time, Mr. Farsio.
I had, I had, I had, yeah, see, very smug, and I hope everybody who's watching this on TV just sees, if you're not in line with what you want, then you're a bad person, and everybody should condemn you. I should know that, because I'm dealing with, what am I dealing with? We all know what I'm dealing with. Yet you don't want to do the right thing by other people, but you create division, you feed off of it, and you love it. And I don't want anyone to say that this was about, oh, bad, we don't want gays and trans and all, that's, that's all, that's all, you know what that is. It's not the truth. Yet you guys sit up here, you don't say anything. And I don't know what else. This school is unrecognizable. Unrecognizable, and it all comes down to one person. Keep checking the clock. You, Dr. Moore, you got, you had an opportunity, and I told you this about three years ago, four years ago.
Mr. Farsio, please, I'm going to respectfully ask you to follow the rules and just direct your comments to me. You can say whatever you'd like within the boundaries of the public policy.
I'm sure Dr. Moore will tell me, well, my time is up, since he's so enthralled with the watch over there. Well, you're the board president. Maybe we can get the, maybe we can get the super in line and understand that just because people don't agree with him, you don't create division and confusion, because that's what this was all about. Has nothing to do about all the other issues. He created that. And it's time, like, this school is unrecognizable. I hope you know that. Like, I've been here a long time. I've been a taxpayer almost all my life. I love this school. I don't love what it's become. You guys got to fix it. You have an opportunity. Whether or not you guys made certain decisions in the past, change it. No one's going to hold you, no one's going to hold that against you. No one. Change it. You have the opportunity to do it. Do it. You can't, you can't confuse the kids. And don't keep treating them like they're victims and telling them they're victims, because you thrive off of that.
Thank you, Mr. Farsio. Is there anybody else who has public comment for tonight? Okay, if not, we have a, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you guys were walking out. I apologize.
All right. Hello, my name's Elliot Franklin. I live in Delaware Township. Hello to the new board, new board members. You will see me here at every single meeting, and along with my friend Jay, we are the Flemington QTs, a community group that supports queer and trans community in the Flemington Borough and surrounding areas. I've been coming to every single board meeting since February. I don't have any kids. Probably will never have natural kids, since I'm trans. But you know what? Like I said in another board meeting, when you promote an environment that teaches children to not only be tolerant and accepting, but teaches them that accepting mistakes about themselves is not a character flaw, you can say, hey, that ideology that I had when I was 14 was pretty messed up. Maybe I should change my mind. Those aren't bad things. Dr. Moore seems like a real great guy. Wish he had been the superintendent of my school. But yeah, just wanted to say hi. You're going to see a lot of me. New hair, same me. Happy New Year, and we're going to be keeping an eye on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I am from Reddington Township. I'm a senior here. As the only student speaking, and I would just like to say that the adults who have come up to the podium at this board meeting and at the past board, past board meetings, they do not speak for the students. I do not speak for all the students, but I will speak for myself and the things that I have experienced at this school and the things that my friends have experienced at this school and told me about. There are a lot of things here that need to be changed. The students are suffering. And it's not because of recent changes that have occurred, it's just because of systems of oppression that continue to plague the school environment and continue to affect students. The school has been gradually moving towards a better place, but the reality is that it's just not there yet. We still lack a lot of inclusive measures, we still lack a lot of accommodations for trans students specifically, that I've outlined in past board meetings, but I think I will outline again for the new board members, who, I don't know if you guys listened to the last board meetings, but I'll say it again. Trans kids at Central face a lot of things, a lot of crap. Excuse my language, but there's no better way to say it. A lot of crap that other students don't face. We don't have access to bathrooms. They implemented two gender-neutral bathrooms, one in this building, right over there, one in the other building in like the far corner math hallway, my sophomore year, so two years ago. And they are really inaccessible. You cannot get to them if you are all the way over there. It takes five minutes to walk there, and your teachers will get mad at you if you take five minutes to walk to the bathroom. So most of us just don't go to the bathroom, or we use the gendered bathrooms because we can't walk all the way over there. Not to mention that the gender-neutral bathrooms are not open during passing time, they're not open in the mornings, they're not open at lunch, they're not open after school. So if we exist in the school any of those times, which most of us do, being students, we cannot use the gender-neutral bathrooms anyways. Not to mention that there is not a gender-neutral bathroom in IMC, the library, there's not a gender-neutral bathroom in the music building, music and communications building, and as a music student, I go in there a lot, and it's rough to not have a bathroom in there that I can use. There's also a huge lack of teacher training, and not just teacher training, but staff training in general on how to support queer students. Teachers constantly deadname and misgender students. They use language that makes them feel lesser than their peers. And they encourage bullying of other students by their peers, not intentionally, but because they don't, either they don't know any better, there has not been enough training on it, or they just don't care enough to try. And that's not okay. The students at this school have been fighting for a long time for this, and the reality is that there are not a lot of students showing up at board meetings, because it has been a long day of school for us already. And then, a lot of us go to work, or we have like two or three hours of homework, or we have extracurriculars, because God forbid we need to get into college, and we just don't have the time or energy to come to these board meetings. And our voices are constantly being spoken over by adults. I have not, I said this at the last meeting, but there has not been a single adult, non-student who has come up to this podium at a past board meeting and spoken against the things that I am saying right now. Who has spoken against the drag show, which I don't actually think I've ever mentioned in name, but everyone keeps harping on the drag show. And no, they didn't say explicitly that they think the Pulse Club should shut down, or that they don't support queer, trans students, but it's implied. And we, as the students, we know, we can tell, and we are harmed by it, and we are hurt by it, and our mental health suffers. And I really just want to be at home right now, doing my homework, so I can get to bed at a reasonable hour. But alas, I am here because I am sick of the injustice that is consistently being perpetrated against students at this school. I am sick of no action being taken, so I encourage all of you board members to please take action, please help us, students. We are really just sick of pouring all of our energy into coming to these board meetings and saying things that we really shouldn't have to say as 14, 15, 16, 17, 18-year-olds. Just please, like, do your jobs and help the students and stop, you know, fussing over, you know, minor things like, oh my gosh, how dare we add more gender-neutral bathrooms, let's renovate the whole IMC. There's funding for gender-neutral bathrooms, if there was funding for the entire IMC to be renovated. You can put gender-neutral bathrooms wherever there is a binary bathroom. Don't just add one gender-neutral bathroom in the far corner of a school like an afterthought. Put them everywhere. Make it so that you actually care about trans kids, because at this point, we don't think you do.
That's it. Thank you.
All right, necessary paperwork has been filled out. I will try to keep this brief.
Can you please state your name and address?
Friya Hodges. I live in Highbridge Borough. I've been a resident for a few years, and I sent this last meeting, I'm pretty, and I'm going to say something that I'm sure everyone here knows deep down, including the members, the honorable members of the board. This isn't about the drag show, it never has been. That's just the hot and button issue of today. The real issue is whether or not children and students deserve to be their own people, whether or not they are citizens with autonomy, who have the right to choose their own destinies, or if they are property of their parents to control, and if they displease them to be thrown away. So far, the board has shown, has taken the stance that they are citizens and people, and that has been very much appreciated. With the three new members of the board, we will be watching to see what their stance on the matter is. And I look forward to seeing what their stance on the matter is, although I have my suspicions that I might be a bit displeased, but anyway, that's really the only thing to say. Anyway, let's get, I'll let you get on with the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, turn her right this time. Hi, my name is Jeremy Sylvia Sinkaglia. I don't really have, oh, I'm from Edison, and I drove an hour to be here. I don't really have a big, long message to say, but I just hope everyone on the board here, going forward, is supportive and accommodating of trans and LGBTQ students. And that's really it. Just please be supportive of the students regardless of their identity, and please help them feel safe and at home. Thank you.
Good evening. John Denlinger, Raritan Township. I am happy to welcome our new board members, and I'm sure that they will work toward implementing common sense plans and policies that will benefit all students and represent the majority of voters who elected them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sue Fox. I live in Flemington Borough, and I have recently begun attending some of these meetings, and I think this will be a pretty simple question or issue, or whatever this is. First of all, welcome, Happy New Year to everyone. How, what's the best way to educate myself on proceedings of a Board of Education meeting? You have an extensive agenda each time, great, you know, clearly lines, outlines what needs to be accomplished. The bylaws, I'm really looking for process information, how, like, so, obviously, this is the general comment forum, the second one of the evening. It says in here, you know, you'll respond to some things, but maybe not to all. So, at some point, are things responded to? I mean, I just really don't know, I'm not trying to be difficult, I just really don't know how a board, how the board meetings work. I assume there are bylaws, there's always bylaws, and I assume there's lots of process information in there. Is that just like your best?
I can answer the question once you're done your comments.
Yeah, no, really, I just want to understand, the best way to educate myself on the goings-on, both what we see or in a part of, and behind the scenes?
Well, so, public comment is not a Q and A, it's not a discussion with the board, it's an opportunity for the public to come in, view the board's work, and give comment on items on the agenda, or just general comments. Everyone is welcome, you don't need to be a resident. We do answer questions at the end, once public comment is over, if it's a simple answer that we can give in the moment. If it's something more complicated that requires some thought, or some research, or just a moment to absorb it, to answer it, we typically respond by email. And that would either be coming through me as board president, who speaks on behalf of the board, or Dr. Moore, if it's more appropriately an administrative matter. So typically, what we do if there's a question at the podium, if we can answer it, we answer it in board comments, which comes after the residence forum. And again, if we can't, we typically follow up, we make sure we have your contact information and follow up with any answers we can give. Obviously, as I've said before, if you've been here, personnel matters, any matters involving students, security cannot be discussed. But if there is a question that can be answered by the board or administration, we will follow up with you if we can't answer it in the moment.
Okay, just to ask that question, though, would you suggest the best way to acquaint myself with the proceedings would be the bylaws? Like, is that a basic process document to understand?
Yeah, so, Ms. Fox, thank you. We do have all of our bylaws on the website, so if you go to our Board of Education webpage along the left-hand side, you'll see a policies and regulations link. And then, the initial section of our policy manual, they're numbered 0000. It's the first section of our policy manual contains all the board's bylaws. I'm happy to connect with you and give you some other suggestions as well. The New Jersey School Boards Association has some resources that might be helpful to you, just to get a sense of just how boards operate and what the code of ethics that we all talked about earlier, what the boundaries are there, so.
And speaking of which, if I can interrupt right after we finish public session and do some board comments, our board council is here to do ethics training for us, which is mandatory for each board every year. So if you want to stick around and have an hour, feel free to stick around, you'll learn a lot about board ethics, and what the boundaries of a board are, what we can and cannot do, and really what the scope of a Board of Education is. So, you're more than welcome, as is the rest of the public, to stick around after the meeting and listen to the board council presentation, she's fabulous.
All right, great, well, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. And Mr. Brandt, if you don't mind getting some contact information from Ms. Fox, we'll follow up.
Okay, is there anyone else with public comment tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll conclude the public comment. Next, we've got board comments. We're, I'm a little reverse and topsy-turvy tonight, since I didn't start the meeting like I typically do. So I do want to also mimic what, echo what Mr. Fowler, not mimic, echo what Mr. Fowler and Mrs. O'Donnell said. I want to welcome Mrs. Duggan, Mrs. Peterson, Mr. Reymar. I know, we've connected a bit by email, so we've, I've welcomed you a little bit, but I'm happy to meet you in person and see you here. We're all really looking forward to working with you. Happy New Year to everyone, which I didn't get to say at the beginning of the meeting. And again, I'm very just grateful to be back in the position of president to continue our good work this year. We are all, and I think I can speak on behalf of the returning five board members, we are all available to speak with you with any questions you have. Feel free to reach out to any of us by email or phone with any questions, you know, it takes a little time to sort of understand how things work, I think I'm still figuring it out as well. But feel free, in any moment, to reach out to any of us, and we're really looking forward to working with you this year. And I'm cut off.
Five minutes throws me off.
So, we're going to move into board training, which as I just mentioned to the last speaker, will be about an hour of our board council doing it here in public. Everyone is welcome to stay, if you'd like, about basically the confines of what the Board of Education can and cannot do. But before we do that, since we have all nine of us here, which may be a rarity going forward, we'd like to do a photo for the website. Mrs. Tucker, maybe we could turn up the lights a little bit, so that we can have better lighting, and we could do a quick shot of the entire board for the website.
You want to do a quick recess, and then that might give people?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I'm sorry, do we have more board comments?
I guess not.
Okay. Okay.
Did you want to say something?
I did. Put lights.
Yep.
So, I just wanted to thank the students and the folks who spoke today. It's always good to hear what's going on and what your experience is, and, you know, just keep telling us. And I would just say that I think when, when folks come to speak, that, you know, being respectful and following sort of the protocol of the meeting here in this environment, in this school, that belongs really to our students and our extended community, is really important if we want to talk about students feeling safe and having a sense of belonging. I think we really need to be respectful when we address each other, and I think that's really important, so, wanted to put that out there. And thank you again to the students who spoke.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. Do we have any other board comments?
It's the chatty corner, I don't know.
Yeah, go ahead, have at it.
I also wanted to thank everybody for their comments on all sides of the matter. Again, we only have so many perspectives at this table. So the more perspectives we can get from the student body, from the community, the better we can evaluate decisions that are going to be beneficial to this institution. To the students who aren't able to be here because of other challenges in life and timing and responsibilities, please, at least, I can speak for myself and say, writing into us carries the exact same weight as standing at that podium and delivering a message. So if, if timing is a challenge, and you can take the time to send in a letter, that lands with as much earshot as being in front of the microphone for us. And we don't just listen to it, at least I don't, on these meetings and forget about it. It is something that is mulled over from all different perspectives, all different thoughts and diverse inputs that we do get at this meeting and through correspondence through the mail. So again, appreciate it and empathize that you might not always hear back from us directly at these meetings, but we are considering it and using it in our, and weighing in our decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Anyone else? Okay, we do not have executive session tonight, I just want to make that. So once board ethics is done, we will then, and conclude the meeting. So can I have a motion, please, for a very brief recess, two minutes maybe, to take a quick photo for our website in a second? Can I get a motion? Thank you. All in favor? Okay, we'll take a very brief recess, and then we'll go into our ethics training.
Happy New Year, nice to see everyone. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Alicia Donella, I'm an attorney with Parker McKay, we represent the Board of Education. So I just want to give a, in addition to saying Happy New Year, I want to give a shout out to Bruce and Lori, who have probably seen me do this, you know, half dozen times in their storied careers as board members. Everyone else is getting up there. But we're going to talk about two things tonight, we're going to talk about the code of ethics for school board members, and as you can tell from my title slide here, and a little bit more. What I've done is I've added some slides on at the end, I wanted to give the board a little bit of an overview of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And I'll get into that a little bit more later, why I asked Dr. Moore and Lisa if I could jump in on a little bit of that, but you guys may have picked up on the fact that you're seeing and hearing more about it at the board level, and you're seeing this uptick, and more and more of these cases are coming to the board. Since we have a lot of, since we have three new board members, three and a half, Kane's, Kane's, you know, not new, but probably still, yeah, we all are, we all are when it comes to this one. So I figured it's just sort of a good moment to, and there were some amendments this year, to take a moment and just kind of give you a board-level view of what HAB is and how you should be thinking about it. But, first things first, we are going to talk about ethics, okay? So the administrative code, whenever you see a slide of mine reference NJAC, that's the administrative code, it's written by the Department of Education, and you already had it on your agenda tonight, but what the administrative code requires is that every Board of Education annually discuss the School Ethics Act, the Code of Ethics for School Board Members, at a regularly scheduled public meeting, adopt policies and procedures regarding training, and provide documentation. training, and provide documentation that each member has received and reviewed the Code of Ethics. For the new board members, you guys are going to, you'll be embarking on your training. I think probably everyone's, you know, there's, you probably have a couple. Kane's probably still in your cycle, too, of Governance 1, Governance 2, Governance 3, the New Jersey School Board Association. One of them includes ethics. So this training you're getting tonight does not substitute for that. You still have to do that. Theirs will be more comprehensive. It'll cover some more topics. But there is a requirement for new board members to take certain specific training. So if you don't absorb everything tonight, you will hear it again through school boards, and I'm sure it'll be great. So, School Ethics 101, just to give you the highlights here, you are the governing body of the school district. You're charged with high-level policymaking decisions. You are the only entity that can enter into contracts or other binding agreements. However, your decision-making authority is limited, and you cannot administer the schools. We're going to talk about what that means in a few minutes. And in many situations, you may not act without the recommendation of the CSA. CSA is short for Chief School Administrator, which is a broad term for superintendent. So you'll see that a couple places in my slides. So, all right, ethics is a little dry. Here we are, January 3rd, 4th, what is it? It's January. It's never going to be sunny again. I'm already cranky. Thinking, I was driving up here, I was thinking about the first time I did ethics for 100 and Central. I think, Lori, you were there, it was like a 7:00 AM on a Saturday. Thank you, Dr. Roberto. So with that in mind, I'm certainly happy to be here at 8:00 on a Tuesday. But I don't want this to be dry. I want this to be user-friendly. And I think that the Code of Ethics training can really be viewed as obligatory. But I want you to think about why we're talking about it. And there's a couple, a couple things in there I want to get at. But first, let's just talk about what a Code of Ethics isn't. Okay? It's not your floor. It's not necessarily a code of conduct. It's not the law. It's not a court order. It's not even your policies. Okay? But it's also not the ceiling. It's not your personal morality or beliefs, or the way that you live your life or make your own decisions. It's intended to help you navigate everything in between. And I think, specific to being a school board member, the Code of Ethics does a really good job at putting the guardrails on what it is a school board member does. So it really helps, in broad strokes, to define the role of the school board and the role of a school board member. So this is really intended to be user-friendly. What I always say when I'm doing this is what I want you to come away from this with is not, you know, a photographic recollection of everything I said. I just want there to be enough that, like, there's a bell that goes off in your mind, so that if you're confronted with a situation, or concerned about responding to an email or making a decision, I want there to be like a little bell in your mind, much less loud than Jeff's timer, by the way. That's loud. A little bit softer than that, that just kind of triggers something like, hmm, is this something that I should be looking at through the Code of Ethics, or is this something that, you know, presents a concern for me acting in the role of a school board member? Let me pick up the phone and call Lisa. Call your board president. She'll get you in touch with me. Don't want you to remember it. I just want you to know when to ask the question. And the other thing I like to point out about a Code of Ethics is that what it's, that's what it's for. Anyone in any other licensed profession knows this. Doctors, lawyers, journalists, you know, any number of medical professionals, even board members, right? You have a Code of Ethics that helps you navigate the intricacies of your profession. That's what it's there for. It's not there as sort of a condemnation, or to suggest that if you have questions about this, or if it's not quite intuitive, that you're unethical. This defines your role. It doesn't tell you what you should know. You, like, I don't expect any of this to be intuitive, or like, something that anyone inherently knows, like, it's not about right or wrong. It's about what the parameters are for a school board member. So look at this as a tool. If you have any questions, ask them. No one is going to think that you are unethical, right? It's intended to create a common language and a common understanding of what everyone's role is. So, there we go. All right. So the Code of Ethics for School Board Members, before I get into the nitty-gritty of it, just sort of in broad strokes, the Code of Ethics for School Board Members is part of the School Ethics Act, passed by the New Jersey Legislature. It is administered by the School Ethics Commission, which is a board within the Department of Education. The Administrative Code takes the Code of Ethics, which this is, anything you see that has that little subsection that says 18A 12-24.1 is part of the law. Then the Administrative Code is where we see what the evidence of a violation of it is. So I just want to give you guys the format of my slides. I'm going to show you the code. There's 10 different subsections, evidence of violation, and then a couple different examples of cases, just to sort of demonstrate how these provisions have been interpreted. Things to think about. Okay? So we're going to start with subsection A here. This one seems easy. Lisa read it earlier during the agenda. I'm not going to read all of these. This is basically, you're going to follow the laws. You're going to follow policy, state board of education, court orders, et cetera, desired changes are only brought about through legal and ethical procedures. Here's your evidence of a violation. And again, because I don't want to put everyone to sleep tonight, I'm not going to read through all this. I emailed this to Jeff. I'll make sure that Heather has it. It can be on your board docs, so everyone can look at this at your leisure. But this is what I meant by the School Ethics Commission writes the portion of the Administrative Code that tells us what a violation of each section is. So it's demonstrative to do it for this particular subsection, okay? Because what it's very specific about here is that evidence of a violation is a copy of a final decision from a court of law, administrative agency, et cetera. So it's actual, it's an actual finding that there was a violation of the law. It's not just someone's opinion that someone acted in that way. And so we see that in this particular case. So in this particular case, so this is a case, anything that has that C and then a number dash number, this is a case from the New Jersey School Ethics Commission. Okay? So this was a case where an employee of this board of education filed ethics complaints against board members who took action against her employment at a board meeting without issuing a RICE notice. So for those of you who don't know what a RICE notice is, it's a notice that you have to send to an employee before they're going to be discussed or action taken after discussion in executive session at a board meeting. It gives them notice that there will be discussion and potentially action taken that will affect their employment, and it gives them notice of their right to have it in public. So it's an absolute right for public employees. In this particular situation, an employee wasn't given that. Board members took action anyway. And this was a case, I put this in here because it sort of surprised a lot of us. This is, because it was, it appeared to be a pretty clear violation, but the School Ethics Commission said is, we are not looking at this until there is a court order or a judgment in a lawsuit that says that this board or these board members violated the law. So the progression of it was, there was a meeting, this thing happened without the RICE notice being issued. That employee, within a month or so, filed ethics charges and sued those board members. That litigation is ongoing. But the School Ethics Commission looked at the complaint and said, we are not looking at it at this moment, because right now you do not have that evidence of the violation. There has not been a court order or a finding that that has been, you know, that a law hasn't been filed or rules been broken. Okay? So that's my procedure for these slides. I'm not going to go through in painstaking detail all of these. I'm just going to point out the highlights, but I thought that one was fairly demonstrative of what we're looking for here. Because this case really gets at, you do not have the evidence of the violation to sustain this just yet. And that was the other thing. It was sort of like a dot, 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 yet, right? That litigation will unfold, and then if those board members are still on, it would be possible for that employee to refile the ethics complaint. Okay, subsection B. I'll make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children. Seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. This is your evidence of a violation. Again, I'm not going to read it, but basically, if there's evidence that you took action contrary to the welfare of children, or to obstruct policies or programs designed to meet the individual needs of all children. So what does this look like in practice? Okay, I've got two examples there for you. One is from Madison. Board president who raised concerns to the principal and the superintendent about a child's teacher and filed a HIB complaint, did not violate this provision. They did not take action, I'm sorry, I missed the punchline. This employee was non-renewed. This board member voted on that non-renewal after filing the complaint, after complaining. Okay? Even though that board member voted on the non-renewal, that was not taking action against the educational welfare of children, because those actions were taken as a parent, the filing of the HIB complaint, the complaining about the child, and the non-renewal, this is a personnel action, it comes through the superintendent. So although the non-renewal isn't an affirmative action necessarily, recommendations for renewal and non-renewal come from the superintendent. So this board member wasn't acting independently at odds to the educational welfare of children.
So talk to me about this later, but can you talk a little bit about the specific code?
Yeah, that comes in, there's a specific code section for that. So we are going to talk about that, and how, and what the board's obligation is there. And it will involve the words arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable, everyone's favorite. All right, so the other, the other sort of demonstrative little case note under this section is from Livingston. This is where a board member was found to have violated the code, when that board member released an ethics complaint filed against another board member to the media, which contained confidential information about the other board member's child. So you've got a board member, you know, who's got an ethics complaint against them. There's a complaint that speaks specifically about that board member's child, who was a student in the district. Releasing that confidential information to the media was found to be a violation of the code, because that was an action not taken in furtherance of the educational welfare of children. Subsection 3, now this is a really important one. Okay? This is one of the things you'll hear me say a lot, you'll hear other people say a lot, policymaking, planning, and appraisal. That is your job as a board of education member and as a board of education. Policymaking, okay? I'll help frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. So we don't just come in and make policies arbitrarily. We study them. We discuss them in committee. We get feedback from teachers, from students, from administrators, from parents, from community members, right? Anyone who's going to be affected by them. But at the end of the day, the board's role is limited to policymaking. Here's your evidence of a violation. Again, I'm not going to, you know, let it sit up there for a minute. I'm not going to read through it. But like I said, this is one of the most important things. This is one of the most important tenets of board of education membership. So where have we seen some people go awry of this? Well, in Asbury Park, oh, I'm sorry, that was my bad. Board members conducted a site visit to assess a candidate for assistant superintendent without board authority, and that conduct was outside the scope of a board member's authority. So the reason that conduct was outside the scope of a board member's authority is because recommendations for assistant superintendent, business administrator, and everyone else down the line only come from the superintendent. So board members do not individually assess candidates for positions lower than that of the superintendent. It isn't to say that you are not kept involved in the process, advised of the process, but ultimately, those recommendations come from the superintendent. So taking action to independently go to another district, do an onsite observation of a potential candidate, those board members didn't even necessarily have any idea whether that person was a candidate. So that was found to be outside the scope of a board member's role of policymaking, planning, and appraisal. And then the other thing that you see under here, the one that starts with an A, so anything that starts with a C is an actual case from the School Ethics Commission. Anything with an A is an advisory opinion. So the School Ethics Commission does have a procedure for board members to ask questions. If I did this, would it be a violation of the code? And sometimes they give answers that they want to make public. And then that's what we see, these public advisory opinions that start with an A. So this is one that made kind of a splash, if you'll forgive me, you know, believe me, in the school board lawyer world. A few years back, they issued an opinion on volunteering, which suggested that it would be a violation of the Code of Ethics for board members to regularly volunteer for certain things. One-offs, class field trips, stuff like that, less of a concern, but regular volunteer positions, where you'd be having contact with students, potentially directing staff, or even taking direction from staff, would not be limiting your conduct to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. So really, an interesting opinion on that. And again, you know, back to my thesis here, not super intuitive. You are fundamentally volunteers here as the board of education, right? You want to do a service to a community, to your community. You want to, you know, enhance the functioning of the schools. It would make sense. You need an extra pair of hands, let me come in and do this. You need this, let me help. But because of your role as a board member and the way we define it here in New Jersey, that would actually be a violation of the Code of Ethics. Cool if that's not intuitive. It shouldn't be. It's not intuitive to any of us. That's why we talk about it.
Good question.
Yes, sir?
Can you go back to the three slides?
This one?
Yeah, that's good. Board actions are confined to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. But the next couple of slides, it keeps saying that 18A is limited to policymaking.
Yeah, that's just my, that's just because all that, that's all I could fit in that little blurb there. That's my shorthand for it.
So we shouldn't get fixated on policymaking?
Yeah. Policy, planning, and appraisal. Yep, absolutely. Yep. You are welcome. Thank you for noting my limitations in PowerPoint, though, Kane. I appreciate it. Always looking for that feedback. Okay. Yes, ma'am?
So I went to the end, the PTA, you were saying, the volunteer perspective, you really would get into a situation if you were accepting money. But you could, if you're not directing staff or anything like that, you could still volunteer in school, you could still make a lot of money.
Yeah. No, it really doesn't have anything to do with money. There's nepotism rules, there's different contract issues, there's different conflict principles that are covered elsewhere than the Code of Ethics that talk about volunteering, or excuse me, that talk about accepting money. I think I referenced a case later that gets at what you're talking about. In case I don't, I'll talk about it now. There was a board member who regularly, before he was a board member, did some sort of like a 50/50, like a, almost like Chick-fil-A night at 100 and Central, right? Like, you know, 20% of the proceeds of whatever goes to the education foundation. Once that person became a board member, solicited an advisory opinion from the School Ethics Commission as to whether he could continue doing it, again, a great service to the district, something for the community. The School Ethics Commission at that point said, no, because there's self-interest at that point. So there's some, you know, you could get the impression, or you could give the impression that he is acting in his own interest, because he's generating business for his restaurant, or whatever it was, and would receive revenue from that, because it was like a percentage of it would go to the district. So there's a case like that, that I think I discussed later under one of the other subsections. But the issue with volunteering is what you see underlined there, the regular volunteer position. So if you volunteered to be the assistant director for the play, or the assistant field hockey coach, where you're coming into regular contact, that's generally where you're seeing the School Ethics Commission say, no, not a good idea. There were sort of a pendulum of cases. They kind of went back and forth on this a little bit. But where they landed is with this kind of idea of regular volunteering. If your kid's class is going on a field trip, and you want to go and volunteer to shop around the field trip, do it. It's fine. You're going to be there as a parent. It's a one-off. It's not a regular thing. There were a bunch of advisory opinions on PTA involvement, you know, holding various positions in the PTA, that in the last, it was like right before the pandemic, school ethics had kind of cleared up. You know, if you're not, like, you can be the treasurer, you can be on the back end and still be on the board, as long as you're not having that daily contact. So it's really about, like, the nexus is really how much contact you're having with students and teachers, and the possibility for the impression that the lines are being blurred, that you're giving direction to teachers, or even taking direction from teachers, and otherwise just not, or disciplining students, you know, otherwise not confining your actions to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. Okay, micromanaging. I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members, to see that they're well-run. Okay? So this is sort of the converse of policymaking, planning, and appraisal. This is what we do do. This is what we don't do, right? We see the schools are well-run, not by micromanaging, but by staying up here in the policymaking, planning, and appraisal universe. There's your evidence of the violation, but really what it is, is sort of encroaching on any sort of day-to-day operations of the school, daily functions, et cetera. So where have we seen this in practice? Monroe Township, that first one, I actually really like this one, because this demonstrates a board member doing exactly what they should do. Someone filed a complaint against a board member. That board member had complained about the complainant's conduct at a high school baseball game. I'm assuming it was an unruly fan. That board member later asked to be on the board's policy committee to, like, to look at, to review, to tighten up, or whatever, the spectator policy that that district had. That person who he originally complained about filed a complaint, said this was micromanaging. He was getting into the day-to-day operations of the school, and what the School Ethics Commission actually said was absolutely not. That's exactly what a board member does, right? That's the right vehicle for handling something like that, is through policy. You've observed an issue, right? You've taken it to the administration, who vets it, figures out what's possible, brings it back to the board committee. You discuss what a policy might look like, and then you act on it at a public meeting. That's how it should go. So this was obviously not a violation of the Code of Ethics. That was a board member functioning the way that they were supposed to, within their role. Opposite of that, board member was found to be in violation of the Code. There was a student who the superintendent had decided would not be walking at graduation. It was a discipline and a safety concern. There were very good reasons for that student not to be walking at graduation, and the board member essentially tried to order or direct the superintendent to allow that student to walk at graduation. And that was found to be a violation of the Code. Nothing more than that, just that attempted order, that attempted direction. I put in here, you know, I noted here that the police had reported that there were threats, the student was a target of shooting, all that kind of stuff, just to sort of demonstrate the background. The board member was made aware of that report, but just to demonstrate that there is always a background to these sorts of things. And those are the conversations you have. You don't just, you know, you don't get to make that direction. So that act by that board member was, in fact, micromanaging under this section of the Code. So that act by that Board member was, in fact, micromanaging under this section of the Code. Couple other ones. I always liked this one for some reason, the Sussex Wyantage one. A Board member was really upset with the windows in the bathroom being open. This was a little bit before school security was the way it is now. Like, these days, I'd be like, oh, right, security issue. But just sort of a malfunctioning window in the bathroom. Board member just came into the school of their own volition, took a tour, took some pictures, and then went to the media. We will talk a little bit more later about what the right process for that is, but I'm gonna tell you, the Board member did two things wrong. You don't come in, walk the building, and make a checklist of things that are problematic. That is an administrative function. And more importantly, when you do see things that are problematic, you do not go to the media. You bring that to administration. A1510, this is one that I'm always unpopular whenever I am, you know, telling Boards about this one. Personnel committees, exit interviews. These are topics, a lot, these are hot contentious topics with the School Ethics Commission. This one in particular discussed that Board members would be in violation if they participated in an exit interview, or even just observed an exit interview of a staff member who was leaving the district. That would be a breach of their obligation to refrain from becoming directly involved in activities that are the responsibility of school personnel. So there's also advisory opinions out there on personnel committees, Board members participating in interviews for open positions. That being a clear violation of the Code. So there's this sort of cluster of opinions there. I will tell you, this one comes up a lot. Board members always want to know why people are leaving. You know, they just don't believe that there's 10 retirements after a two-year pandemic. You know, we are seeing a lot of people leave the profession now. So it's coming up more and more, you know, with every good intention. Why are people leaving? What can we do to get them to stay? I think there's certainly valuable information that can be mined from those types of things, but they are not for the Board members to conduct. They're for the administration to conduct. I know, right? I agree. It is interesting, and they went out of their way to say that. So not just, you know, not just conducting it, but observing it. And I think that, I think that that gets at one of the other provisions we're gonna talk about, which is supporting school personnel. Because I'll tell you, realistically, when a Board wants to get involved in exit interviews is because they don't believe what their superintendent's telling them. And they think that the staff wants to, you know, talk about the superintendent, and they are not willing to do that, you know, through the administrative process. I would submit to you that every Board, that every Board meeting of half the Boards I represent for the last three years would tell you that is not the case. People are more than happy to come out and complain about principals, administrators, and Board of Education members in public, in private, via email, et cetera. But this was a different, more simple time in 2010, I suppose. But that is one of the reasons why I believe the advisory opinion was solicited, was because this was a Board who just felt like if they could just get employees away from the superintendent, all these employees would be saying, hey, this is what's going on. And then the Board would be privy to that information. Realistically, there are other ways for people to, I mean, Kane, you said it tonight. Anyone can email you. People can come up at a meeting, they're not comfortable doing that, they can email you. So, you know, that's, but I think that it, I think it's twofold. I think that that was probably SEC's assumption about the intent behind that. And then when you stack that into that other code section that talks about supporting district personnel, having the Board there kind of overseeing, you know, a principal conducting an exit interview gives the appearance that you're not only running the district or micromanaging, but that you're not supporting school personnel. That would be my guess. They're all over the place these days. Yes, ma'am?
Can I just go back a little bit? When it kind of came to this, when you said that, you know, obviously it's not appropriate to, you know, close to the media, you know, as opposed to, you know, Kane, come here. What about, like, social media? What about, you know, human or, you know, preferences about school staff and experience?
Yep. There are slides about that, Noel. Spoiler, spoiler alert. Yeah. Yeah, social media is a whole big cautionary tale, and there are a couple of cases we talk about specific to social media. You know, as a lawyer, I will tell you, I just want everyone to, like, sort of sit quietly, like, without their phones, and go to bed at 10:00 and not at all talk on social media about anything. You know, the human, the part of me that's still human recognizes that it's hard to not interact, like, because you're already limited in how you can interact, but it's hard to completely shut that off. So we will talk about some of those parameters. Yeah, okay.
One more question.
Yes.
So what advice would you give to a Board irrationally if there was a community concern that administration was not vetting personnel appropriately? And we weren't supposed to micromanage, but it's a breach to the community. We have to make sure that what's being done is being done ethically?
Yeah, so I think that it depends on what the concern would be. I would tell you that there's legal obligations that every district has to follow in terms of criminal history background, prior employment, that kind of stuff. To the extent that you're concerned about that, or someone raises a concern about that's like such a specific concern. I had this in another district, they changed contractors very quickly. There was concern from the community, are all these new contractors vetted? Have they all done their criminal history review? Well, we have this kind of 90-day grace period that we work in, right? We're able to give that answer. Specific questions like that, I think you can refer to the administration. And I think that's within your purview as a Board to ask, what is our process? And that's really what your question is gonna be. What is the process? So the more specific the question is, the better the answer I can give you. And I also think the better answer, the better the answer that you can get. But, you know, I think it's within the Board's purview to understand, how is it that we hire people? Where do we post? Depending on the position, is there a committee? Who is that committee made up of? You know, what is the process? How do we get from, you know, vacant position to Board agenda? So while it's not in the Board's purview to select people, to even vet resumes, but to know that there is a process is within the Board's purview. So I think you can ask those questions. Some of that might be appropriate to share with the community. The fact that there is a process, depending on where you are in the process. Like, after the process, it's easier to talk about more of it. And I'm sorry, you're like right in this microphone. I feel like I'm not, like, looking at you directly. After the process, it's easier to talk about what that process was. During the process, you know, there's, you know, there's stuff that you're gonna withhold at that point. But the fact that there is a process is probably the information that you would be conveying to the community. You know, issues of discretion, you know, do we like what the process resulted in? That's something we'll talk about later in the section about voting to appoint qualified personnel. Does he hand?
I was just thinking, wouldn't that be a case, I'm thinking, where if that was a concern, if that goes first for administration?
Yes, yes, absolutely, absolutely. But what's, but what's in, what is within the Board's purview there is to know the process, right? To know that there is a process. And as Board members, I think you are conduits to the community. Specific questions, you're gonna refer to the superintendent. But if people want to know, hey, how do you hire? I think it's okay for you guys to know, to say, well, we post vacancies on frontline. And, you know, depending on the position, sometimes there's a committee. You know, people submit their resumes, those resumes are vetted by committee. You don't have to be specific, but I think you can still be a conduit. I think you can still explain to the community that there is a process. The more specific the question, what is the process for this? What is the process for that? Those are first gonna go to the superintendent because I think where that is gonna end up is people might just not like the process. That's okay. People are gonna not like a lot of stuff you guys do. Okay. Subsection E. I will rest, will recognize that the authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises, nor take any private action that may compromise the Board. So this is my favorite subsection. Some of you might know what's coming, okay? I think for two reasons. Like, number one, this gets at a really important principle of boardsmanship that I'm gonna talk about. But more importantly, I get to talk about Voltron. I get to make a very dated cartoon reference because this is how I understand this subsection, okay? You guys are these little individual space, tigers, Jeff? Lions, lions, yeah. Space lions, okay? But you come together to form Voltron, Defender of the Universe, okay? The individual lions know Voltron is the Board, okay? That's where you are powerful. So I was trying to think of like a less dated reference here, even though this is like my favorite part. I'll do this presentation four times this week, it's my favorite part. It's all the blank stares that I see, and there's always one. There's always one person who gets it, and that's my moment. So I was trying to think of some less dated references here, I don't have any. But here's the other reference, right? As a Board, you're Destiny's Child, you are not Beyonce, right? You're a queen, no one's Freddie Mercury. You are the Beatles, you are not John Lennon. This is the other thing that I've been thinking about. And this is gonna be a little diversion here from ethics into just boardsmanship here, okay? This is how you want to think of yourself. You are a group, you are a choir, you are not a solo act. You are the Supremes, not Diana Ross. You signed up to be in the band. Your job now as Board member is you've all gotta be playing the same song. Someone's gonna play the guitar, someone's gonna play the drums. No one's asking you to all sing the same note. You've all gotta be singing the same song. And that's your job as a Board member. That's how you make music, that's how you demonstrate leadership to the community. You can, you can talk about the set list, you know, you can talk about who's gonna do what. You can, you know, talk about what talents you have that, you know, that enhances the performance. But at the end of the day, you've all gotta be singing the same song at the same time, at the same tempo. So my final dated reference. Do you? Do you? Okay, that's fine. Thank you, sir, thank you. Thank you, I've got three for Voltron, three for Voltron. Yeah, I think I am. Well, and this is, this is just sort of to wrap up my dated references, right? This is a very 80's after-school special. That was my little diversion into a rant on boardsmanship, but it's the analogy that I'm going with this year. So the more you know. Okay. Anyway, evidence of our violation of subsection E. You guys can read it in the presentation. Here's what it looked like in action. C1614, Asbury Park. Board members were censured because they went to a candidate for assistant superintendent and basically promised to advance his candidacy. These were a couple individual Board members who did this. It wasn't with the authority of the Board. It wasn't like, hey, go see if this person would be interested and tell them to contact the superintendent. Just a couple of Board members who individually went to someone who they wanted to see in the superintendent position. And also promised to resolve a contract dispute, which was not within their purview to resolve. So that's like, I think that's a, that's a trickier one. The next one you'll see, this is just a Board member who got pulled over for a traffic violation and went off and basically did a, do you know who I am? Right, you know, I am, I am D. Kellogg, Vice President of the 100 and Central Regional High School District Board of Education, okay? Yeah. Yeah. We have a very loud timer I can bring to your office and let it beep if, you know, if I don't get my way here. So that one's a pretty clear, trying to leverage your personal position. But the one before it, right? Going to someone and being like, hey, if this came up, you know, would you be interested in this job? And you know what, like, we're gonna take care of that contract, we're gonna take care of it. Those are conversations, like, I can make it sound shady, but this could be your neighbor. This could be your kid's second-grade T-shirt. These are people you know, you guys live in this community. These situations are going to come up, okay? This Board member, these Board members probably weren't trying to do anything, you know, illegal or immoral. You know, they were doing what they thought was best. They were having conversations with people that they've known their whole lives. And that's what I mean where it's easy to trip over some of this stuff and where you have to be very careful about it. And that's why all I want you to know is just, okay, I'm in a situation, someone's asking me about something, I'm in a conversation, I'm not sure how much I should say. Let me just hit the brakes and let me just check on this, right? Let's have the conversation. So a couple examples for you there, moving on. And this gets at a little, this subsection F gets at, I think what you were getting at Rebecca with, or you, I'm sorry. Sue, Rebecca, I'm sorry, I don't mean to point. With the financial gain thing. This is, this is relevant to that. So this is, I refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. This is where we see the evidence of the violation, that's what it looks like. And, yeah, here it is. A2914, this is the case I was talking about. So it was a Board member owned and operated a business, could not contribute, or could not continue to work with the Ed Foundation to offer a fundraiser, charging students, splitting profits, because that could be perceived as using their position for personal gain. Mm-hmm.
I don't know the restaurant, I have no money.
Yeah, you're not making money from it, right? You don't own the restaurant, yeah. No, you can, you can absolutely go participate in a fundraiser. You can, yeah, you could buy a ticket to a raffle, you could do all that kind of stuff. All of that's fine. Well, listen, this is, that was the thing, that was how I always pitched the volunteerism cases. I'm like, these are a gift to you folks. Say no to whatever you need to and just say, the attorney said we shouldn't be volunteering. Feel free to use that. Second case here, a pretty interesting case of, you know, like, someone playing the long game here on revenge. This is a Board member who got elected after being terminated as an employee in district. Terminated specifically by the superintendent and who had filed ethics charges against the superintendent. Upon being elected, immediately called for a vote of no confidence in the superintendent. That was, there was, they solicited an advisory opinion on that. Someone was able to put the brakes on this and say, don't do it yet, let's just ask the question before you do it. And the School Ethics Commission indeed confirmed that that would be a violation of the Code of Ethics because this is someone who had been disciplined by the superintendent and fired by the superintendent when they were an employee. So they were not, they were, they were acting for personal gain, not in furtherance of the educational welfare. I respect the long game here, you know, the sort of getting your nemesis here, but they needed to wait a little bit longer. So, but yeah, I always, I like that example. And again, it shows that it's sort of subtle. It's not just my, it's not just monetary, it could just be an agenda. Like, this person clearly had an axe to grind with the superintendent. It's not always gonna be that clear, but certainly a violation when it is. All right. So confidentiality, this is the first place where we're gonna see some of the social media cases. I'll hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. And I think we often forget the second half. We talk a lot about confidentiality here, but I really like the second half here. I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow Board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school. So I think that that's just a really interesting other half of this, is that you guys, and it gets back to this idea that you guys are a conduit, right? You are the, you're the channel sort of between the community, you represent the community, you're elected by the community, you interpret, you know, you do PR for the Board to the community, but you also bring feedback back into district. So this is where you're gonna see your evidence of a violation. And here's a couple case notes, the first of which is a, this is, I think, our first social media case. So this was interesting. So the Board member was censured for responding to and having a social media message reposted over an alleged student discipline incident. The message identified the school, grade level, gender, and specific details about the discipline, about the incident and the discipline imposed. This was actually, this didn't go out publicly on social media. This was like a, it was like a text chain, right? Like, I'm still, like, I'm old enough that, like, I think, I still think Instagram and Facebook for social media, but like, there's, there's all sorts of different ways it happens now. And I think it was like a, it was like a group message thread on one of the platforms that this Board member was on with some members of their family. And someone had, if I recall correctly, the way this started was like, you know, on this thread, like, hey, I heard so-and-so about this student and the discipline. And the, and the Board member, you know, responded or confirmed, like, didn't disclose the information, but kind of confirmed it. And again, it wasn't public, public out there, it was within this text thread that then at some point, text threads, I don't know, DM chain, whatever they're called, but at some point became, you know, more widely, more widely aware. So that was a, that was a central violation of the Code of Ethics. And then this next one is a reply all. You know, I almost feel a little bit bad for this Board member because we've all had that moment. But this was basically a member of the public who had raised a concern, or who had raised a concern that was previously discussed in executive session. Member of the public had followed up with an email to all Board members, basically saying like, where does this stand, or what are you gonna do about this? And then a Board member hit reply all and forgot to take the community member off. And in that reply, the Board member referenced the fact that this issue had been discussed in executive session, thereby disclosing confidential information to the public about an executive session discussion. So, so this person wasn't censured, they were sanctioned, which is the lesser of the offenses. And because it was inadvertent, there wasn't, you know, there was no sort of bad judgment. It was just kind of a moment we could all relate to. But nonetheless, still a violation of the Code of Ethics. Okay, so here's where we get to some personnel questions. And this is one of the very specifics New Jersey school board things that I think is a, something that's not intuitive and something that's also not immediately obvious when you're sitting in the audience. "I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer." That's your superintendent. Chief school administrator, chief administrative officer, superintendent, all the same thing. There's your evidence of the violation. Now, this is, this is significant, that the board member acted on a personnel matter without a recommendation from the chief administrative officer. So you guys can't come to the table at the next meeting and say, "I'd like a motion to, to appoint Alicia as the principal of Hunter Central Regional High School." Right? No recommendation from Jeff, nothing. Can't make that motion. All personnel motions come through the superintendent. Your job as a board member is to give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. That's it. You're, I mean, you're voting on their appointment. I think that once you, you know, and maybe Jeff or Lisa or someone can speak more to how these things are discussed in committee. But generally, you know, there, there's some, you know, the board would be aware of, there are these vacancies, we're looking to hire for these positions. But it's not the board member's job to second guess the qualifications or the decision about who it is. So you can ask questions about the qualifications. Where are they coming from? Are they certificated in New Jersey? You know, all that kind of stuff, but not why this person instead of that person, kind of a thing. Yeah, and you generally don't get information about unsuccessful candidates, right? Because you've got people who might be looking for jobs, who are, you know, their, their bosses or their, you know, the, the districts they work at might not know they're hiring. You know, there are real confidentiality issues there, so it's not even just a matter of, you don't get to have that information. It is, it's a duty that's vested in the superintendent to make those decisions. And again, you know, I, I mean, I'm assuming Jeff looks at all the resumes, but he's got a lot of people who do that for him, just the way they do it for you. But you would get, so if, if the resume is how you do it, right? That's how you're, that's the information that you get about the successful candidate, their qualifications and that kind of stuff. Yeah, and there's a lot of ways that this makes sense. Like, I can tell you, like, you know, I, I mean, I can sit on a, I can sit in on an interview with, with three of my colleagues and we will all have a different opinion on who we just interviewed. So, it's one of those things where someone makes the decision. Your job as policymaking, planning, and appraisal board is to make sure they're qualified. I am positive that at least half of the hires that are recommended to you, if any one of you individually were on any of those committees, you'd like someone else better. That's just how it would go. That's how it is with hiring. But that doesn't mean that that person isn't qualified and that doesn't mean that you get to make that decision, right? And, you know, the decision is made by the people who work with these people every day. Like, I think there's some practical reasons why it makes a lot of sense. But, I mean, mostly just that, I don't know how it is in your worlds, but we can never agree on who to hire. So, you know, too many cooks in the kitchen, you never make that decision. But in any case, this is actually very, it's specifically, you know, reg, like, you know, restricted by statute. The board's job is to vote up or down. And that's that. Yeah, and I think it's also good to hear from, I'm sorry, Bruce, go ahead. Yeah, I was going to say, no one wants to read all of those, right? It's a good point, Bruce.
I will say too, obviously, when the board members usually, when it's a higher level position, you know, administrative control, if you get a chance to meet that person,
And listen, if you have concerns, if you've got some personal experience with someone, always share that with administration. I mean, they're going to want to hear that. But, you know, there's still a process that, you know, that it doesn't disturb the process. You can offer that feedback, but as a board member, you know, your job is to make sure that they're qualified. There's one very specific situation, which I'm not going to get into because I don't want to get into the weeds here, where you're making, where you would potentially be, where you have the potential for appointing someone without the superintendent's recommendation, and that's on a non-renewal, but we will get into that some other time. It's just too far into the weeds for this, and it's kind of outside of the scope of the code of ethics. Because again, voting to, considering, like, so my little, my headline here, which Kane has pointed out is not the full thing, your job here is to consider the superintendent's recommendation. It doesn't mean that you have to vote yes. You just have to consider it. And you have to seriously consider it, and you have to ask questions. And that's what you'll see here in these two case notes I won't go into, but basically it says, like, it's not a violation of the code of ethics not to agree with one of the superintendent's recommendations, as long as your reasons for that are not arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable. There has to be a reason. You've got to be able to articulate it. There has to be a reason. It's okay if it's not as compelling to other board members or to the administration, but there needs to be a reason.
So how do you manage the perception of real quick, if you don't mind, that we're supposed to be Voltron, but we have a sense that a process is not being followed? How do we bring that up?
Can you be more specific about a process?
So theoretically, if we were going to hire somebody new in district, and we're in a weird window of time where we didn't have a committee meeting to go through that hire, but then that person's hired, brought in front of us for to vote on, it hasn't gone through the process of the committee asking all the right questions. Is that all not supposed to be hashed out here since we didn't have the committee? Or are we supposed to hash out that we didn't have the committee here?
Great questions.
To vote as if everything's
Yeah, no, great questions. So what I would say in that situation is I would talk to the committee chair. If it hasn't gone through committee, just find out if they're, you know, maybe it was, you know, maybe it was addressed, make sure it wasn't addressed, like, maybe it didn't get into the minutes. Otherwise, you can always reach out to the superintendent and ask those questions, because there are moments where there, you know, there's, like, we've got to, we've got to act on this person's hire right away, because we risk losing them. And that's like, I'm going to come back to more specifically answering your question, but most school district personnel have to give their employers at least 60 days' notice before they can resign their position. And if they don't, they can actually lose their certification. So, and you guys only have so many board meetings per year, so a lot of times, we get into these weird timing issues. I don't know if that's the case here, but I see it plenty of places where sometimes you have to jam something on that hasn't fully gone through the board-level committee, but it has gone through the actual substantive hiring process. That would be, if that came up, what I would say is pick up the phone and talk to your superintendent, and just find out what the rationale, what the rationale is behind putting that person on the agenda, why it didn't get to personnel, maybe it was slated for personnel, and then the personnel committee, everyone had a conflict that night, and, you know, we can't hold up the hire because board members weren't able to make it to the committee. There's any number of reasons why that could happen. I would ask the superintendent first. I don't, especially on a personnel item, because you're talking about, like, a human being and someone's reputation and stuff that's generally confidential, that's not something that you would hash out at the table. But if it's an exception or a deviation to the process, to the extent that there is a process, right, like, or if it's a deviation from the expectations, I would talk to the superintendent about that. And all of that's okay. The whole idea of Voltron is that's when you can act, okay? But when you are individually the Space Lions, right, you can go do your own, you can talk to other board members, you can talk to the superintendent, you can get your questions answered. You're not empowered to act, though, until you are at a publicly advertised, public meeting that has been advertised, and where a quorum of board members is present. So that's the idea, like, individually, you can't take action. You can't go to that person and say, hey, this is Kane Fowler, Hunter Central Board Member, process wasn't followed, so, you know, like, I'm taking you off the agenda. You individually don't have the ability to do that. The board has the ability at a public meeting to vote down that recommendation. So that's how that goes. And it's hard, because a lot of the work does happen in committees, because this is boring, quite frankly. A lot of this is boring to witness and to go through, and it makes the, the public meeting, it bogs it down, and you lose your audience just as much as if it's a quick meeting. You know what I mean? There's, there's a nice balance in these committee reports, in this what we did this month, and quite frankly, I think you guys have pretty exhaustive committee reports. But sometimes things happen more efficiently in committee. You can just, you get more done. And you guys have a committed board who've always been really good at attending committee meetings and moving things through that way. So, but it does, I, I think that there's a bit of a public perception that you're always fighting with, that, hey, we just say yes to everything, but in reality, there is a lot of work and thought that goes into it. There's a lot of work that happens before it gets to that board table.
And if I could just say, and that's why it's so important for everyone, I'll tell you, if anybody's stretched for time, to review agendas in advance and to review minutes in advance. If we get the agendas when they go out public on Fridays before the meetings, so if there's something on the agenda we have a question about, that's the time to reach out, you know, to answer any questions, if I can.
Yep.
Not that that the table isn't appropriate, but as, as we said, personnel matters are a little stickier, but once you get the agenda, you should give a look at it, ask it, and stuff like that, and review theirs. Call that to your boss.
Yep.
Sure. It is, I was going to say, it is, it is also appropriate, if you feel that there's a perception, to give Dr. Moore an opportunity to talk through what the process was. So, in particular, in the meeting tonight, I think that that would have been an appropriate question before the vote, if there were concerns about what the process was.
And by the way, that was discussed over so long. What's on the agenda tonight, this double, and I thought I gave that clear, and I did, and I thought, I thought I said on the agenda, there was no committee report, but this was something that I
Yeah, and I
Dr. Moore, is that many of these meetings are available, these meetings identify which committees
Right.
Gets very specific about some of these matters, so that you dig in pretty deep. And you know, the thing about this, what we've kind of come up with in the last year, this structure, is where committees report, but they report on paper, or they report more online, within a certain time before our official meeting. The idea is that everybody can get to see the recording
Right.
before they, and have an opportunity to respond. Back to Dr. Moore now, this particular situation may be rough because of the timing, you know, the end of the board and all that.
It may not fit in the minutes, but it was
But I'm just saying, this, this committee arrangement we've got right now, we'll have to operate and see if you like it, but I mean, we have come up with that after experimentation of potential swings
Mm-hmm.
and this is a really good compromise. We don't have to have two meetings a month, and we get all the detail of the committee work to the board members before the official meeting. So now, after, we usually have the committee meetings the first two weeks of the month, then they, then a week, we get the, the reports come to us, then you get at least a week before the meeting to read through the reports, because it takes some time.
It does.
And then get back to the board, or Dr. Moore, about items, or anything.
I think the chair is how we, if you have a question about
So the chair, it's either the chair.
Yeah.
You start with the chair.
Yep.
Start with the chair, and then we work our way.
Yeah. And it's good boardsmanship, right? You heard me talk about that a little bit earlier. You know, issues of boardsmanship are a little bit outside the code of ethics, but I think that the
Start with the
No, but I think that, I think it's a good point, though, because what, you know, one of the things, the New Jersey School Boards Association does a great presentation on, like, the Ten Commandments of Being a Good Board Member, or something along those lines. And one of the things they say, and it's just sort of common parlance, is no surprises at the board table. And with all, and again, with all, with all good intentions, it can feel like an ambush, right, being asked a question on the spot at the board table when someone might be like, wait, what meeting? Was that in the minutes? I don't know. You don't want to, when you're in public, you don't want to sort of say something if you're not 100% sure sometimes. So it is one of those, I think, tenets of good boardsmanship, is to review the material and try to get your questions answered before the meeting. If there's information in there that is, that it, the committee feels is important for the public to know, like, for instance, on our agenda tonight, we're hiring a new principal. You know, we originally posted this, if, you know, whenever we received this many applications to discuss a little bit about the process, that's something that the committee can decide to give some information, you know, at the public meeting. But if there's information that you don't have because you weren't, you're not on that committee, or you've just got questions, get those answered before the board meeting, rather than, you know, sort of, so that you can vet your concerns. So that if there is a concern that you're going to bring up, you can, you know, give someone a heads up about that.
I'm sorry, I just stepped out for two minutes, but, um, so I don't know if you discussed this, but one thing that we also talked about was, so if enough board members, or even if it's just one, raises a concern to the chair, the committee, the committee chair might want to share that with the public. That, you know, it's a way to maybe, and we just started doing this, but to bring it out and say, okay, you know, I had a board member raise this concern, you know, let's have a discussion about that. That's sort of what that's, it's like, if you're on a committee, you say, you know, committee meetings, a board member raised a concern about this.
Right.
So that, that was sort of the process we're trying to get started now, so we can, you know, have a discussion about something that, you know, maybe the public would like to.
Yep. And that's all a balance, right? Because there, there's information that is legitimately, you know, you need to maintain confidentiality, you know, you need to, you need to withhold it. And then there's also just sort of the freedom of being able to discuss ideas, and is this a good idea? And like, kind of the no judgment and brainstorming moment, which is a little bit harder to do in public. So messaging some of that to the public is a great idea. You know, it's a lot, it makes a lot more sense, and it's more streamlined and digestible than having the board sit up there and sort of, you know, debate the nuance of regulations or policies. Like, it just doesn't, it bogs things down, I think. Things change, you always try new things, but I tend to think, I always, I always tell my other clients about how you guys run your committees. I like it. I think it's, I think it's nice and efficient. So, all right, so moving on, we're really close here. You heard me talk about this earlier. I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties. I'm going to skip over the evidence of the violation. We have a number, or we have another, uh, I don't know if it's, oh yeah, we do, it's in the next slide. We have another social media case here. But I'll just, I'll talk about these cases real quickly. And this is about, think of this as presenting a united front, okay? We don't get up here and we don't, you know, as boards, we don't criticize the teachers, the administration, the custodians, you know, you support the people who work for you, and if they're not doing their job, you ask the superintendent, how can we better support them so they can do their job better? Right? It's not about the people, it's about the management. That's what you take on as a board. So I would, I would keep that in mind when you're thinking about this. In Springfield, board member violated the code when he sent a letter to the superintendent copying the president of the State Board of Education and the ECS, which is the Executive County Superintendent, accusing the superintendent of letting employees violate board policy. This is, again, public, essentially a public criticism, you know, a public accusation against the superintendent. Moving down, this is a board member who asked a district employee whether they would be interested in the superintendent position if it opened up. It was not a vacant position. It was a clear, you know, suggestion that that superintendent was not going to be renewed or was going to be fired. While it is within the board's ability to do that, when you are, you know, when you have the consensus of the board, individual board members certainly can't do, you know, be out talking to, to people like that, suggesting that, you know, they're being critical of the superintendent's performance. And then here's our other social media case that I was thinking about. So, board member was found to violated the code and was reprimanded for sharing a post on their, and that's, I put that in quote, because that's a specific Facebook term that I know. I don't know any of the other ones. For sharing a post on her personal Facebook page that contained false allegations of misconduct about a staff member who happened to be running for a seat on the board. And that staff member was a substitute. It was actually a former staff member, someone who used to be a substitute in district. And there was some crazy rumor going around that someone else, I think the opponent who was running, was like, you know, when so-and-so was an employee in district, they were let out in handcuffs, or something like that. And then this board member shared that post on their page, even though they didn't create the content by sharing information that was inaccurate and misleading, it was found to be a violation of the code. So, as someone who has a lot of relatives who share things accidentally on Facebook, I think that's another one that is, is possible to do. It's just another sort of social media cautionary tale. Be very careful on your personal social media accounts in, you know, addressing anything board-related. If you have to think twice about it, don't do it until you talk to somebody else, is what I would say your rule of thumb is. There you go. The more you know. Sorry, I forgot I put, I forgot I put that in there. Proceed with extreme caution. Okay. I think this is our last one. Proceeding through the proper channels, I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer, and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after the failure of an administrative solution. So, that garbled sentence aside, let me tell you, this is another one, I'm going to call this the let yourselves off the hook. Same as volunteering. It is not your job individually, or even as a board, to fix every problem in this district. You pay a superintendent and a lot of other people to do this stuff for you. Your job, if you receive a complaint, thank you very much for letting me know. I will bring that to the superintendent's attention. Forward the email, copy the person, you know, to let them know that it was forwarded to the superintendent, but that is your job. If you get cornered in the supermarket, what are they doing about the gender-neutral bathrooms that the kids keep bringing up at school? You know, that's a great question. I'm going to direct, I'm going to let Jeff Moore know that we talked, and he will get back to you on that question. You do not have to solve all these problems. You shouldn't try to solve all these problems. And quite frankly, as an individual board member, it's always going to be difficult to not give the impression that you're speaking on behalf of the board. And again, back to the Voltron principle, right? Only one person speaks on behalf of the board unless the board agrees otherwise. Generally, it's going to be the board president. But individual board members, like, when you're in those conversations, it's always going to come across, like, you're speaking on behalf of the board, or taking a position of the board, which, you know, you may or may not intend to do. But generally speaking, like I said, this is the let yourself off the hook. If you get cornered, if people ask you questions, you refer that right back to staff. You can follow up, ask that that person, you know, you can say, hey, Jeff, remember that email I sent you? Did you get back to that person? That is okay. That's okay to follow up and make sure that it was addressed, but it is not your job to, to solve those problems. So, yes, ma'am.
I was going to say, and that's also where the appraisal piece comes in.
Yes, very much so. Yep, it's another one of those sort of converses, right? We make policies, we don't implement the policy. We don't, you know, like, we, like, the policy says, we're going to clean the schools every day, right? We don't go in and wipe the mirrors. Someone else does that.
On an annual basis, we have the opportunity to appraise the superintendent.
Absolutely, yep.
On, on the performance of policies, you know,
Yep. Absolutely, absolutely. So, couple of, I mean, these are sort of straightforward, I think, these case notes. Board members violated the code by going to a principal in connection with a parent complaint instead of going to the superintendent. Again, micromanaging, stepping over the line, you go through the superintendent. Board member violated the code by not providing superintendent with letters, because he did not like the superintendent's management of the issues raised in the letters. Instead, that board member went to other administrators. Again, that was a violation of the code. So, always goes back to the superintendent. Don't take it on yourself, and always refer people back to the chain of command and model that by using it yourself.
I have a question with having kids in the school. If I had to talk to one of my kids' teachers, you know, do I just do, like, the Facebook thing? Am I speaking on behalf of myself as a parent and not as a board member?
I don't even think you need to do that, right? Like, if you're just, if you're reaching out to the teacher and say, hey, I saw, you know, my, my kid got a, you know, zero on this assignment, you know, he says he turned it in, you know, can you tell me what's going on? If you're specifically talking about your kid, I don't think you have to be that formal. If you're concerned, you can.
I do.
Okay.
I understand.
Did you? Good for you guys.
If I went to even, like, a supervisor, I would always
Okay.
call on you in, like, the city acting talent.
Yeah, then great, then, yeah. See, that's like, see, that's where, like, I'd be like, oh, that's such a stiff lawyer thing, to be like, yeah, I do that all the time. Be a human about it, Alicia. Tell them they don't have to, you know, but there you go. Okay. So, take it from the other, the lawyer and the accountant, right, who were other, my other rule followers here. But yeah, I don't think you're going to get in trouble if you're not doing it, if it's very clear, right, that that's what you're talking about, but if it makes you feel more comfortable, absolutely.
I just don't, you know, I don't want them to feel like I'm, you know, but then I don't want them to come back to me and say, like, oh, you were trying to, you know, move something.
Yep, absolutely. So, okay, that was it. That's code of ethics. If you guys can give me another 15 minutes, I'm going to give you an overview of HIB. Got that in us? I don't even know how we're doing on time.
Do we have, like, two minutes? Either on a quick break? No? Last group?
All right. Harassment, intimidation, and bullying. If you hear us say HIB or HIB, this is what we mean. So let's just start there. Okay. So, no one be alarmed when I say, okay, that's just my stupid little slide, that we're going back to the beginning here, early HIB. There's a reason I'm doing this, okay? I specifically asked Jeff and Lisa if I could take a couple minutes with the board on this, because I think that more and more HIB issues are coming to the board. You are hearing more discussion of HIB from the community, and you are definite, I am seeing at least more appeals across the board in districts. So you're seeing an increase in filing, and you're seeing an increase in board-level appeals, and I think just general awareness of this. I will tell you that, for, for all the years I've been practicing school law, I have never thought that an increase in filing of HIB complaints is necessarily a bad thing, because what I think it means is that more people are aware, that it's out there, and, you know, that it's a, it's a vehicle available for complaints being addressed. Doesn't mean everything is HIB. But I don't necessarily, I always just kind of like to put that out there, that there isn't this cause and effect. We're not necessarily seeing more HIB complaints because, you know, we are seeing more HIBs. I think it's generally a greater awareness. Now, post-pandemic, now that's, that was always my thesis. Post-pandemic, I think we are seeing more behavioral issues and more sensitivity to behavioral issues generally. So I do think that's in the mix. But, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to talk to the board about this, because I think you're going to see it more. That's number one. Number two, HIB, HIB has a huge PR problem. Parents don't understand it. It's very difficult to understand. You know, you're going to hear people talk about it a lot, and you're going to be like, that is not, that's not HIB, is that? You know, and so I think the more that, that you can, that you can understand it, the more comfortable you're going to be making some difficult decisions, and even possibly, again, just sort of being that ambassador, you know, to, to your community, and be like, that's not really what HIB is, or, you know, just sort of trying to, you know, help with this PR issue. So when I'm, when my type, when my slide is, is captioned, "Back to the Beginning," I want you guys to understand why we are doing this, because that is one of the biggest misperceptions here, okay? So, we started with this back in 2002. That was the first version of the HIB statute that was adopted. In 2007, it was amended to include the recognition of cyberbullying, and in 2008, it required boards to post the HIB policy on the website. So that is 2002 to 2008. So we've had this way before what we know today, but it was weak, and it wasn't specific. So, then come the 2010 amendments, okay? Why? Why did we see this big, you know, overhaul in 2010? So in 2009, there was a report from the New Jersey Commission on, whoa, what did I do? I don't know what I just did there. Does anyone know how that happened? Okay, anyway. A report from the New Jersey Commission on bullying that told us that 32% of students from 12 to 18 were bullied in the previous year. 25% of schools identified bullying as a daily or weekly problem. New Jersey students were being bullied at a 1 percentage point higher than national average. In 2010, it was demonstrated that bullying led to student suicide, and the commission concluded that strengthening standards will help reduce the risk of suicide. Finally, the commission concluded that district students, parents, teachers, boards would benefit from clear standards on what constitutes HIB, how to report, investigate, and respond to those incidents. So, this bill, the HIB law, as you now know it today, was introduced in the legislature on November 8th of 2010. It passed the House on November 15th, the Senate on November 22nd, and signed by the governor on January 5th. Not since the early days of COVID did we see this much problematic legislation move so quickly and without a chance to catch up. But that little editorialization aside, does anyone have any recollection or theories on why we moved so quick on this law back then? I know Lisa knows.
The handlebars of power?
Say it again.
Was it the handlebars of power?
No, but good, good theory. It was the Tyler Clementi case at Rutgers. It was the student at Rutgers who was, who died by suicide after being bullied by a roommate for being, I think the roommate livestreamed a sexual encounter with another, it was a gay student, and the roommate livestreamed it, or something along those lines, obviously causing him presumably a lot of distress and leading him to die by suicide. So that really brought this idea of bullying to the forefront. It wasn't because of an increase or an interest in, you know, imposing greater consequences. It was because we saw the impact of bullying. So, what were the 2010 amendments? It amended the definition of HIB to provide for, to require that substantial disruption or interference of orderly operation, and I'm going to go through the definition a little bit later. Added hostile educational environment. It required HIB and suicide prevention training for staff, administrators, and board members. New board members get that in their governance training through School Boards Association. It requires, rather than encourages, bullying prevention programs, and it requires districts to respond to incidents that occur off school grounds. Excuse me. So, oh, it also required the creation of the school safety team, the district-level anti-bullying coordinator, the building-level ABS, anti-bullying specialist, twice annual report to the board instead of annual. It created the requirement of the week of respect, and it provided for discipline for school administrators who fail to initiate or conduct investigations when required. And finally, it included HIB as conduct that may constitute good cause for suspension or expulsion. So the 10 bullet points I just ran through there, I just want to make the point, and I will make this again and again, only one of them dealt with discipline. Only one of them dealt with student discipline. It's not what this is about. So what are the prevailing themes? Concern for student safety and well-being, training for staff and board, broadening the definition of what we understand bullying to be, preventative measures to educate and ideally prevent bullying, transparency to the public in how we investigate, how we define, how frequently this is happening. What are we not seeing? We are not seeing enhanced disciplinary consequences. All we saw in that amendment was, and this could also be a potential for expulsion, just like a whole other list of things. So we're not seeing disciplinary consequences. We are not seeing the demonization of kids who engage in this behavior, okay? And these are the things that I want you to think about. As I keep telling you, HIB has a PR problem, because this is what people think it is about. So, moving through very quickly, this is your definition of HIB today, okay? These are your nuts and bolts. Any gesture, that whole paragraph in italics, like, it's a thing. It's anything. A gesture, a social media post, a written communication, a single incident, a series of incidents, on-school property, off-school property. It's just pretty much, could be anything that happens anywhere, as long as it meets these other, so we go from this very broad, almost, like, absurdly broad definition, to these very specific criteria, and this is where the rubber meets the road. It must be reasonably perceived as being motivated by any of those things, right, in actual perceived characteristics, such as race, color, religion, et cetera, et cetera, or by any other distinguishing characteristic, okay? And that's where it gets complicated. Everything that comes, that comes before that makes a lot of sense. These are, you guys might have heard the term protected category under the New Jersey Law Against Discrimination. So it encompasses all of that, but also any other distinguishing characteristic. None, none of us knew what this meant in 2010, 2011. Most of us are still working on it, but we do know some of what it means. The Department of Education gave us some guidance on this. They gave us some, for examples. Amongst those are weight, hair color, appearance, perceived social isolation. All sorts of things that are a lot more subtle and a lot harder to quantify than some of these things. So this is the first place where it gets real murky. So, gesture, written verbal, a thing that happens in a place that is reasonably perceived as being motivated by any number of very broad distinguishing characteristics, and that substantially disrupts or interferes with the orderly operation of the schools or the rights of other students. So it has to have, it has to have that distinguishing characteristic. It has to have the substantial interference. And then, yep, sorry, go ahead.
So reasonably perceived as being motivated is different from having been shown to have been motivated?
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, no, we're getting that. Yeah, we have, like, eight slides on intent. Not about intent, but let's go there. That's the point that Jeff and Lisa are making. HIB does not require intent. It can be by accident. You do not have to intend, intend to offend someone. You, you might, like, a student might not even actually be motivated by a distinguishing characteristic. But if you look at it objectively, was it reasonably perceived? Is it reasonable that the student, who was the target of the behavior, perceived it as being motivated by that behavior? That is what HIB is about. So we're going to come back to that theme again, and, and this is why, again, think of it in those terms, and remember that it's not about discipline. Because discipline probably does require some finding of intent. It requires some knowledge that they did something wrong, or that there was a code of conduct violation. HIB doesn't require intent. So discipline doesn't always follow, but we're going to get there. So just to get through this sort of very dense, difficult to wrap our arms around definition, you need to have these two things: distinguishing characteristics, substantial disruption, and then one of these three things, okay? Okay? Now, you'll see that I underlined the word of effect in the second one of those three things. Has the effect of insulting or demeaning any student or group of students. I'm getting at the intent requirement there. Does not have to be intended to insult or demean, but it, it may, if it has the effect of insulting or demeaning a student or a group of students, then you, you've satisfied this prong. So this is another one where I don't expect you guys to absorb all this. There's concepts here I want you to think about. Why we're doing H I B. Okay? It's because of the impact that it has, not because of the people, not, not because we're trying to criminalize or stigmatize kids who engage in this behavior. That's why this is a very subjective standard. This is really looked at from the perception of the person who was the target of the behavior and that's very difficult to get comfortable with. So H I B or not, right? Student to student, staff to student, volunteer to student. Any of these things in this list is H I B. The key is a student target. None of these things are H I B. Okay? So you guys don't get to file a H I B against the public when they come out and yell. The public doesn't get to file a H I B against you guys when you yell back, any of those things. This is about students. Sorry, board to staff as well. Now look, there are other policies, staff to staff, right? There are other policies that address the way staff behave to one another, healthy work environment policies, you know, et cetera. But H I B is about students. It's about the impact it has on students. Board to public, sorry, I keep forgetting to click. Okay. So again, I don't want to get bogged down in this, but there's a couple of points I want to make in the context of my broader theme here that H I B has a P R problem. So this is the basic reporting and investigation timeline. As soon as you have a report, you are off to the races. There's a very truncated timeline for, for completing an investigation once a report has been received. Okay? So it's really between day 11 and 13, I'm sorry, date, between day like 11 and 13 is when the investigation has to be completed. It's 10 school days from when you receive the written report, which could be anywhere from day one, two or three.
The board is not involved?
Nope, you guys aren't involved in any of this, but there's a thing that I want you to know, right? So just look at this, okay? The investigation's completed, then it goes to the superintendent. So let's say Jeff gets an H I B report tomorrow. He gets an investigation report. Now, we are on the other half of winter break, so we are on, so the last, last week, there are no school days last week, right? Yesterday wasn't a school day. So he could be getting a H I B report tomorrow that was reported, let's say the second week of December. Because of that break, we might just be in, you know, we, we might still be finishing up the tail end of that 10-day timeframe. And I'm telling you this because I want you to put your head in the, be, be parents for a second here. You get a letter in early December, you know, or a call from the principal saying, you know, there's an H I B investigation and your child is involved as the target or as the offender. Then you hear nothing. We go to winter break. So the next thing that happens then is that the superintendent reports the results to the board at the next regular meeting. Okay? Then parents are notified. So if Jeff gets a report tomorrow, the board doesn't hear about it until when's your meeting? The 23rd? So within five days after that report to the board is when the letter goes out to parents saying, this is the outcome of the investigation. So we're in a particular timeframe here where it's a little bit more extended, but theoretically something that was reported in the beginning of December, parents might not get the outcome of that until the end of January. And that's very difficult because you hear this very scary word, H I B bullying my child, right? All of that together and then you hear nothing. It is what the process, like the, you're following the process. The parent is feeling that way, like not because you're doing anything wrong, but it's always something that I like to point out, right? Part of the P R problem.
Well, the other thing to point out too, we talked about this in the first session, in the majority of cases, the discipline, there's discipline involved.
Yep.
It's already been served by the time it comes to you.
Yep.
And there's a lot of work that's done to ensure that people understand that discipline is separate from the H I B. So this is something that's school variation.
Very difficult. And you guys do it well. We talk about it all the time. Your administrators understand this process. I've talked to a lot of them about this at, at various points in my representation of 100 and Central. Not every district does it as well as you guys do it and it doesn't, it kind of doesn't matter in some ways how well you do it. It is a mystery to parents. I have done more H I B presentations this year at board meetings, to boards, for administrative staff, and the outcome of all of that. Anytime I am presenting to some sort of educational staff, they're like, how do we explain this to parents? And I'm like, I don't know. We just keep trying. It's really hard to get a captive audience with parents, like you could try it in the beginning of the school year, but no one really cares about this until their child is involved. And then they're also not at their most sort of objective at that moment. So it's really, it's just something to keep in mind to keep us grounded in some empathy for people when this comes up because it's just a really difficult process. Sorry, did you add her hand up twice?
I want to ask about the timing. So we have an executive session where we're presented with the recommendations on the H I Bs. Are the parents notified five days after that?
Yes.
Or do they get notified five days after we vote on it at the following?
Five days after it. So it comes, so great question. So it comes to the board twice. First, the board is just informed of the outcome of the investigation. Then at the following meeting is when the board takes action. So in theory, so they hear about it after the first meeting. So I always say there's letter one, letter two and letter three. Letter one goes out at the beginning when the investigation's initiated. Letter two goes out within five days after it is reported to the board, which like I said, in the timeframe we're in right now, could be seven weeks later. There's a big, even if it's three weeks, that's a big, big lapse. It's a big gap for parents. And, and it really, it's weird because it kind of depends on where the board schedules. If you're a board that meets once a month, like you guys are, Jeff gets a H I B report on January 24th, that parent is not getting the outcome of it until end of February. They get a third letter after the board acts on it at that second meeting that just says the board took action to affirm the finding. If there was an appeal, then that letter would say affirm, reject or modify.
So what happens if for some reason it, we don't affirm the finding?
At the, at the second, like after, after a hearing?
Between the second and third letter.
So.
It's presented to us, but then at the public meeting, we decide not to affirm the finding.
Without an appeal? Or with an appeal?
Yeah. How is that happening? Does that happen after the?
So, yeah, so well, so let me talk about that and then we'll come back to the question. So after, so that letter number two that goes out after the first board meeting tells parents, this is what the outcome is. It's been reported to the board. If you disagree, you can request a hearing before the Board of Education. Now, they have 60 days to request that hearing. Most of them will request it before the next board meeting because otherwise then you're in this weird procedural situation where you've already voted on it because by law you have to vote on it and then you could potentially get an appeal after that. Let's just take the normal situation where after that first meeting, they get that letter and then they file the appeal or they request an appeal. That appeal is supposed to happen, again, now we're off to the races again, 10 school days. So you can do it by committee if you don't have a board meeting scheduled or you can agree by consent, the person requesting the appeal can agree to extend that timeframe. And most of the times if I say to people, we can get a committee together and do it next week or if you consent to wait, we'll do it at the next board meeting in February and you can be before the full board in executive session. If you do it by committee, it's just at a committee meeting. If you do it at a full board meeting, it's an executive session. So everything happens in executive session except for the vote. So you hear the appeal in, in executive session, then you come out from executive session and the board votes to affirm, reject or modify the recommendation or the outcome of the investigation.
Some procedural things that go on with us as well. When we have a request from a parent for a hearing.
Here, I might as well put this slide up while you're talking.
One of the things that we have to provide is more information about the case.
Yeah, so the statute says that parents are, parents are entitled to receive information about the nature of the investigation, which is basically the allegations, the outcome, you know, any recommendations for disciplinary action or remedial, remedial measures such as counseling. So it's always this weird kind of, you know, needle that we're threading. Like if, if your student, if your student was the target and this other student was disciplined, we might say discipline is, you know, discipline was imposed, right? We wouldn't be any more specific than that. If your student was the offender and had the discipline imposed, right, then the letter would say, as a result, you know, of the conduct, the student received a, you know, one day in school suspension or something like that. So, but more specifically than that, if there's going to be an appeal, we do then give parents out of due process concerns and because we want them to see and understand the case and we want the appeal to be meaningful, you know, we give them their child's statement and we give them a redacted version of the H I B report.
One thing too, when, whenever you hear an appeal, there's always been a conversation that I've had with the parent ahead of time, usually sitting in my office, kind of going over any questions that they might have. I've been also trying to determine exactly what it is that they are taking exception to. If it's the H I B finding, then that's what you, that's what you're hearing is about. It's about the H I B finding. If they don't agree with the discipline.
Right. I don't think, like, I know it was wrong, but I don't think he should have been suspended for three days. That's not a H I B appeal. That's discipline.
And, and that goes to the commissioner. That doesn't come to you, discipline appeals only come to you under very specific circumstances of extended suspension.
Yep.
So I'm having that conversation with parents as well so that they have all the information they need about which avenue they're supposed to take to appeal whatever decision they want to, they want to appeal. And I, we don't, we, we try not even to talk about it being an appeal necessarily to the board. It's a hearing.
Right.
Where they get to make a case.
Right. And a lot of times people want to be heard and what I hear at these appeal hearings, I had six the week before winter break, more often than not, you know, the parent, the parent will be like, look, I know my kid did this, but I don't want them labeled. I don't want them carrying this around, you know, and this is part of the P R problem is that they think that this slaps a label on their child when in reality, this is where kids get to mess up. A H I B is a learning opportunity. It's not about discipline. We've always had a code of conduct for discipline. Disciplinary consequences follow conduct, not whether we call that conduct H I B.
My question too is, I mean, aside, discipline aside, does this, you know, permanent record, you know, but does this like?
So we're getting to that. Yeah, we're getting to that because that's, that's one of the big reasons why you're seeing more of this. So this is my slide on the hearings that you're, the board's role at the next meeting is to affirm, reject or modify. Just a couple of bullet points there on what the board hearing looks like. If the parent is still dissatisfied with the board's determination, they can appeal to the Commissioner of Education. People always get that right.
Can I take a quick question? Second, and just to oversimplify this, I'm a very much a board member. So on January 23rd, if there are H I Bs, Dr. Wolf will present them to us in executive session. He'll go through each case and then he'll say what the recommendation is. Is this a H I B or not a H I B? And really, and then in February, they will be on the agenda for us to vote on. So that's just the process.
Yep. Yeah, that's right. It's not like there's a second executive session discussion unless someone requests an appeal.
Exactly.
And then, then you would do that.
The things are just presented to us, we ask questions.
Yep.
We're told if this was determined to be a H I B or not, and then the next month we vote for that.
And important to note there, there will be H I Bs for vote on the January 23rd agenda that our new members did not hear.
In December. Yep. Yeah. So if you're confused, like welcome to my world. Everything about H I B is a little confusing. There are some things that are so overly procedural and specific and stiff and then there are some things that are broad and really hard to understand. So some of the things that we have, that have been cleared up through regulatory changes since the 2010 amendments, this idea that the 60-day timeframe for parents to request an appeal, originally there was no timeframe. We would get parents who would like nine months later, like I want to appeal a determination and we didn't have anything to say, no, you've, you've waited too long. And so the, the regulatory changes were changes in the administrative code, which again is written by the Department of Education. That provided for back in 2018, this idea of a threshold assessment by, by the building principal where you could, if you can look at a case, assume everything is true and know that it's not going to meet the legal criteria, you wouldn't investigate it as a H I B, you would just investigate it as discipline. Everyone was really excited about that at the time, but I think now people are sort of like see less of the value in that because discipline matters get investigated whether or not they're H I B. You know, if there's an accusation that something happened, someone is doing, the substance of it is not that different. You're bringing kids in, you're talking to them, you're bringing staff in, you're talking to them. It's just like all the letters that we have to send is, is what makes it a little bit more hairy with the H I B. And then, I'm sorry, in the administrative, in the regulatory changes back then, finally we saw something in writing about the idea of a power imbalance being relevant to the determination. So when, when your anti-bullying specialist and anti-bullying coordinator were originally trained, they were getting this training and they, they kept talking about, well, there's no power imbalance. And I'm like looking at all my books here, I'm like, I don't see that phrase anywhere. I understand what you're getting at, but I don't see that anywhere in the law as something that's like a criteria, is this or is this not H I B? The regulatory changes in 2018 recognize that as something that you can consider. So it's always just a, a thing I like to mention.
We see, when we talk about mutual conflict, sometimes it's in that.
Sometimes it's in that universe, yes. So there was very little clarity on what a board-level H I B appeal hearing looked like until like 2019, 2020. We finally got a good string of cases on it. So this one, one case, the commissioner declined to impose the right to cross-examine. Another case rejects the idea that the board-level hearing is an evidentiary hearing. And then finally, an H I B was remanded where the parent wasn't provided with pretty much any information about the allegation, which affirmed that there are some due process requirements in that hearing, that it be meaningful, right? Because a lot of times the letters that go out to parents are form letters because they're having conversations with the guidance counselor, with the principal. They're very well aware of the allegations, but sometimes if they want to come and present their case to the board, there is some entitlement to have some demonstration of this is what was investigated, this is what the finding was based on. So, so fortunately we got some clarity, a lot of the H I B law is being sort of worked out through case law. I'll show you one more slide on just a couple of cases that I think are really interesting that get at this idea of intent. So this first case, a student was substantiated for H I B for calling another student gay, but maintained that he meant it in a joking manner. A L J stands for Administrative Law Judge. When it goes to the Commissioner of Education, the fact-finding hearing is before an Administrative Law Judge, then it goes back to the Commissioner of Education for approval. So what you'll see is an Administrative Law Judge making a determination that the commissioner will ultimately reject. That happens fairly often. In this case, the Administrative Law Judge reversed the finding, the substantiation of H I B, finding that the board failed to consider the student's motivation. The commissioner rejected that outright and confirmed that motive did not need to be considered in an H I B. So that student, like absolutely was just joking, wasn't trying to hurt anyone's feelings, wasn't trying to be mean, was just joking, does not matter for the H I B determination. This other case, really, 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 these fifth grade girls knew how to curse and I, you know, I knew how to curse when I was in fifth grade, but not like they do it these days apparently. Very, very nasty text thread between these girls who were all joking around, very young girls. They were all just joking around and then the joke kind of ended when someone used the N-word. The school did not substantiate it as H I B because the behavior of all on the text thread was mutually egregious. That's kind of, I just think it's worth noting that because this was egregious, these girls were, were saying to each other. So it was, but it was mutual. There wasn't, it's not like we were all ganging up against a black student. But more importantly, there was no substantial impact. So really interesting, you will see H I, you'll see matters not substantiated as H I B where it seems very clear there's a racial slur used or something along those lines, but if there is no substantial impact, that conduct might still be subject to discipline, conduct might still be subject to discipline, but it is not harassment, intimidation, or bullying. And in this particular case, the outcome was like, and the, the testimony showed that like, for the next day, next couple of days, like, the girls were all kind of like awkward with each other, but within a week, they were all working on projects together. Nobody missed school. Nobody's grades dropped. Um, so there was no immediate, immediately apparent substantial impact. And this was like a joke that some kid just kind of took too far. Fortunately, didn't have that impact on anyone. So it wasn't HIV. The very same set of facts with a different student, who had a different life experience, who was perhaps traumatized or re-triggered somehow by a friend calling them the N-word even in a joking manner, very well could have ended up being HIV. Same set of facts. It's really about how the person who was the target of the behavior experiences that incident, which is very uncomfortable. It's very uncomfortable for me as a lawyer. It's going to be uncomfortable for you guys as a board to make those calls. Um, so welcome. Here's, here's what we're dealing with. So, what is our recurring theme here? The impact on the victim is paramount. Because this is intended to help victims identify vulnerable kids, teach kids how not to be jerks to each other intentionally or unintentionally, right? It's about, it's about teaching. It's not about punishment. We've always had a code of conduct that punishes conduct. This is, that's not what HIB is. It's remedial legislation. So what are the misconceptions that we see here? And I'll just, ooh, sorry. HIB is some, has some sort of a hate crime. Um, we've talked about this. Intent is not a factor. These are the things that we hear from parents. You've, you've, you've labeled my kid. You've, you know, you've, you've saddled them with this. It's like this, well, you see in number three, a scarlet H. Um, number two, we've talked about this. There's this idea that a substantiated HIB leads to greater discipline or more serious consequences. That is not going to be the case. The consequences follow the conduct, not whether or not we check off this other box about the impact of the conduct.
Could be disciplined in a case with a HIB.
Absolutely.
And vice versa.
And vice versa.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you see that with little kids. You will often see, like, the HIBs that happen at like the elementary level, rarely. Well, I'm not going to say rarely, but it's not, it's not uncommon for there not to be discipline because these kids don't necessarily, like, they've heard someone say these words, you know? Um, they know it's a bad word. They don't quite understand it. So it might be a HIB because of the impact it has on someone, but the intervention there is not an out-of-school suspension necessarily. It's a couple meetings with the guidance counselor. It's some education. It's some remediation. You know, it's a conversation. And that, it's, and so it's just about, it's, it's just as much about teaching that kid as it is about identifying this other kid who's now afraid to come to school or scared to work with their group in math, you know, and supporting that student.
When we talk about the story that practice would fund, uh, often for, um, students who are found to, to have committed an active HIB, to bring them back into the community.
Yeah.
Not as offenders, but as an opportunity to learn. Uh, and similarly, we, we, um, we struggle as a, as a regional high school district because we don't have control over the education of the K-8 realm. Uh, and so we, we don't always know exactly what our kids come in, come in having.
Yeah.
And so, not that just for the social isolation of the past year, you have kind of a really difficult scenario of trying to get through the, the discipline that's appropriate for those code of conduct violations.
Yep.
Sometimes it's easy to call it HIB or not, but the discipline.
And, and I'll, like, administrators struggle with this. I have districts who, who I still have to have the conversation. Just because it's a HIB doesn't mean there's like an enhancement. It doesn't go from a one day to a two-day suspension because it's HIB. In fact, it shouldn't. Um, there are plenty of, of educators who struggle with that. So it's not even just parents. Um, it's just, it's a really difficult law to navigate. And, and it's gone like this, you know? In 2010, the reason why I went through that history was like, there was a, there was a clear reason why at that moment in time, New Jersey was like, this is what we need to address. Kids are dying. This really impacts kids. Like, we have the data to demonstrate that. And, and when you looked at the amendments, it was about weak of respect, training, investigation, remediation. It wasn't like expel all these kids and, and put them in the, you know, discipline school. So it was really, there was, there was at least a defined vision. The particulars of it have always been hard to implement, but there was a vision of it. Um, it's always had this PR problem, which is what this slide is about. Um, and that last bullet is one that I always like to mention, like, I, and I think this is like part of the talking points that I always encourage on HIB is that this is where kids get to mess up. You know, this is the moment. Um, we don't think anyone's a bad kid. And I'll, you know, like, I, I encourage superintendents and if, if I'm, you know, permitted to, I will say that to parents during hearings. Like, no one thinks your kid is a bad kid. You know, that's not what this is about. Like, this is about a very specific process we have to follow, a very specific set of criteria that we have to apply. Doesn't mean that your kid's a bad kid. Everyone, you know, like, as kids grow and mature, especially in like middle school and high school, they're figuring out who they are. Everyone makes a bad decision about how to handle a social situation or how to interact with a friend. This is where we get to teach them. You know, this is where we get to correct that and where we get to intervene in a way where the outcome is productive. Um, so, you know, I think sometimes it helps to hear that because again, parents have this idea that there is a scarlet H and that it is going in a permanent record, which brings me to my next slide. The 2023 amendments, not a fan. Okay? You can, you can read all of them while I'm, I'm looking at this. Um, the 2023 amendments, I think were really problematic because instead of going in this direction of remediation and education, kind of took a left-hand turn. Or is that right? I don't know. It's late. I guess this is my right. Um, took a, took a turn here toward a much more punitive approach. Um, the original version of these amendments was just draconian. Um, it was, it was, well, I'll leave that aside. There's a much more watered-down version of where it ended up, within the realm of appropriate. But, so what you're seeing here is the imposition of civil liability on parents of offenders, um, who's, of, of parents of offenders whose kids are adjudicated delinquent for cyber harassment and fines for parents and guardians who fail to comply with any condition of adjudication. This is driven by parents who feel like, and I think a lot of people have this opinion, it's the parents. You know what I mean? Like, you can tell the kids so many times, if they don't take the phone away, or if they don't correct their kid's behavior, then they're responsible. There's certainly some truth to that. I don't know that increasing a fine from $25 to $100 gets that message across, but that's where it ended up. And that's kind of where the idea came from. We saw some enhanced documentation. There's standard reporting forms. The DOE had to create a standard reporting, um, form. Uh, there needs to be more specific documentation of the initial notification to parents and any initial assessment by the principal, whether or not to investigate as HIB. This is all fine. This is procedural. It tightened up some stuff. I like the idea of a standardized form from DOE, although it's not a particularly sophisticated or comprehensive form, but at least we all start with the same form now. Um, and then this last bullet point is why we're seeing, I think, in addition to the, the, um, just sort of post-pandemic related behaviors, increased awareness, this is the other reason why in my practice, I think I'm seeing more appeals, is because there's now a specific requirement that if there is a, a finding of HIB, that the investigation results are placed in the student record. I think people, like, people construe this as like a permanent record. My kid was found substantiated for HIB in fourth grade, and now they are not going to get into college because college is going to think that they are a racist. Um, those are a lot of big leaps in there. Um, the result, first of all, discipline has always gone into a student record. Always. It's one of like the primary things. Discipline, grades, attendance, like, these are the things that have always made up a student record. So there's nothing new in terms of the, of consequences. Um, you know, the investigation results are as simple as probably the letters that go to the, the family saying, this was the outcome of the investigation. I don't think it's the full investigation report. I don't think it is details of it. But even if it were, those are not documents that get sent outside of the district unless your kid transfers from one district to another. So what happens is that that will follow the student from one building to another within a district, and possibly between districts if they transfer. Um, which, you know, parents do have some concerns about, but I think the bigger concern I hear is they're not going to get into college. And that is not, you know, we're not seeing that nexus anywhere. Colleges don't get notified of this, um, any more than they get notified of, of discipline consequences. And my understanding of that, and I know I've asked Jeff like a million times, like, what do colleges know about? Like, probably if you're expelled, they're gonna, you know, might know about that. But unless it's, um, it's not like a discipline file goes on your college application. Um, the third event, the third offense, and this is just sort of under the student file bullet, is, um, the investigation results are placed in the record and an intervention plan must be developed. So it's a behavioral intervention plan, and it can require parents to attend, like, an HIV reduction class with a student. Don't ask me how we enforce that. It's a nice idea in theory. Um, but what we're seeing here is just a little bit more on the punitive side. It, it feels to me like where, where the amendments actually ended up is better than where this legislation initially started in like early 2020. It was really draconian. Things were going to the county superintendent, you know? Um, so they've, they reined it in, but it's, I think because of the misperception, I think because of a lot of highly publicized bullying cases. And I think because parents don't understand the difference between capital B bullying, which is what we're talking about tonight, has a very specific legal definition, and lowercase b bullying, which is sort of the very colloquial understanding that we all have just from life as to what feels like bullying. Those two things are not the same. Those two things are not the same. So I think there's this perception amongst parents, you know, that a lot of things are bullying now, which might be lowercase b bullying, but not HIV, and that the idea is that we have to consequence this, not necessarily, you know, remediate it. We have to discipline these kids. We have to escalate consequences. Um, everyone here knows that bullying can be name-calling. It can be very low-level things. It can be very subtle things, things that you will never, ever be able to expel a student for, let alone even potentially suspend them. So I would submit to you that discipline is really not the answer, but, um, people don't usually want to hear that from me. So, with all that, I know it's late. I appreciate everyone's attention. These are the concepts that I want you guys to keep in mind as you are seeing more HIB cases. It's about the impact on the victim. Doesn't have anything to do with discipline. And the idea of this, the purpose behind this is to identify kids who need some support or some remedial training. Big PR problem with parents. Keep that in mind. If anyone has any ideas how we can fix that, let me know, because I haven't come up with them yet. Noel.
That's a question. Um, this strikes me as extremely problematic because, you know, you have a, a parent say who, whose kid was bullied and they file a HIB and the HIB doesn't meet the prompts of requirement for HIB. So it's not determined a HIB. And the PR problem lies in expressing, that doesn't mean there's any less discipline, intervention, and all of that is still valid and happening, whether or not it's classified as a HIB. But this changes that.
How, what do you mean?
I mean, if, you know, a parent could, could be.
Because this feels disciplinary, you mean?
Right.
Yeah.
More motivated for what they may perceive as justice.
Yep.
Um, and I feel that's extremely problematic.
Yeah. And it happens on both sides, by the way. You know, it's not just a, it's not just a parent saying, hey, my kid didn't commit a HIB. It's a parent saying, my kid was the victim of a HIB, right? So it's, it, it works both ways. Um, and, and to that point, and thank you for bringing that up, because just because it doesn't check off the box for a HIB, if a kid, you know, if, if the, if a student has been targeted by another student, even if it's not a HIB, we're still intervening. We're still supporting that student. And I think that is one of the good things that has come from this, is that I think districts look at these situations a little more holistically now and, and look at it from both sides, consequences, but also support. Um, but you are right. And this is part of the issue, is that this makes it feel more disciplinary, more about justice, more about, I know what my kid experienced, or I know my kid is not a bully, you know? Because the idea that it's like in the record, you know, that it's like sort of stuck with them permanently is something that really bothers parents, when realistically, the only people who have access to this are school personnel. And like I said, no one, no one thinks this makes anyone a bad kid. Kids learn. They screw up. We try to teach them to do better. You know, it's, it's the moment for them to get to change and grow and mature.
Hello, the lines of your question. Dr. Wolf, do we do presentations to incoming parents on HIB? And should we just do this presentation while we're into the community?
So, well, can parents coming in have a lot of experience with HIB from the K-8 as well, but you think there probably is.
But it might not be this good.
Yes. Well, there is a need to sort of reset. There's a need to reset.
Yeah.
It's another opportunity to say, it's not about the discipline, but it's the impact and all of this. And we talked a bit about that. Um, parents get a really brief thing, I think, on the, the, the new, uh, parent orientation when they're coming in. Um, but it, there's definitely room to do a lot more there. Uh, and just to add another point too, the, it becomes a really unsatisfying conversation for parents in all of this.
Yeah.
Because you can never talk about, I can never talk to a parent of a victim and say, here's the discipline.
Yep.
That happened to, to the other child, whether or not it was a HIB. You know, so, so we can't even sort of get clarity on, well, what was the?
Yeah. You'll hear, nothing was done. That is never the case. It's just, what was done, number one, either can't be shared.
Yeah.
Right? That's nine times out of 10, or just wasn't to the satisfaction. It wasn't as harsh as what someone thinks. But, you know, it's one of those things where you'll, you'll start to feel that frustration sitting at the board table. You'll hear, nothing was done. And you will believe it because these people feel that. And then you'll be like, Jeff, why didn't we do anything? And Jeff will be like, well, we did this, we did this, we did this, we did this. They're just not happy about this. So it's, um, it's a, it's one of the most difficult things, I think, that boards have to deal with right now. Kane.
Quick, small questions. What's the life cycle of a student file? Is it K to 12? Is it?
So, um, so records get transferred between schools. So you will get, you'll get information from the K to eight. You'll get, you know, grades, right, Jeff? I mean.
Yeah. And a student file script, we hold on to forever?
Yeah. There's, there's things that you do hold on to for record. Yeah. There's something that's like 100 years, I think, immunization, student, you know, there's certain things that are like very long.
Discipline will have to look up. I don't believe, I believe it's X number of years after graduation, but we can look.
I can, I can look it up right now if I.
Okay.
Cause I have that retention schedule.
Finding, and then the third finding. What happens if the first and second are eighth grade and the third is ninth?
Yeah. So it's an interesting question because the, um, I believe that the DOE's model policy, which they finally got around to, uh, to pushing out, talks about, um, if I'm reading it correctly, I almost think they're construing it as three in one year, which I don't know if that is actually how the law reads. I don't think the law is that specific. It just talks about on the first offense, on the second offense. And I think, I think the DOE, quite frankly, was unhappy with that. And I'm speculating, completely speculating. I think that they were probably not thrilled with that and, and put their own interpretation on it, that that is intended to be school year. Cause I think the policy reads for the first, second, third, and then, and then like after any other HIB after that. So if you get three in a year, and then you get one the following year, you're still doing that behavior plan, kind of the thing.
And that, those differences too, are where, part of the world that you live in is in those differences between what the law says and then what the DOE.
Everything with HIB. Yes. Everything with HIB.
And with the HIB policy too, what you'll see is, uh, we, we're going to have to reconsider the HIB policy again.
Yep.
Soon. Uh, because, you know, the state, um, the legislation that changed the legal requirements resulted in some efforts by your policy vendor to produce a policy to make sure that we were up to date with the law. But meanwhile, we're waiting for.
Yep.
The DOE model policy.
Yeah.
Which could then change the policy again.
Yeah. This, the amendments.
It's going to come back up again.
The amendments passed in January of last year and were supposed to take effect in July. The beginning, it was like seven days after the new school year. The DOE didn't put its model policy out until August. And their like two-page HIV reporting form, again, not super sophisticated. I think that came out in August as well. So your policy provider, Charles Esme, was trying to do this in a timely manner, updated your existing policy in like April maybe, then did another update in August after the DOE form. And then they took a more comprehensive look at the DOE model, model policy. And they were like, let's not get anyone in trouble. Let's just make it look like theirs, you know, just to, to make it, so that every district's is, is going to be fairly standardized.
So the coming, coming month or two, we'll be looking at that policy.
Again. All 29 pages of it.
It's, it's the most detailed and prospective policy.
Yeah. You thought this was a lot? 29 pages, single-spaced, that policy is.
And then my second question on that was diluting everything we just heard about HIBs to what we need to be cognizant and thinking about in our, you know, role is policy adjustments and amendments and making sure that the review of the HIB determination by the administration was done appropriately. And that's it.
Yeah. So I think you want to ensure the process is followed, right? I mean, that's what you're saying? Yeah. So, um, so making sure your policy's up to date. Make sure the policy is followed. Um, not second-guessing someone's determination. Um, I don't know if that's exactly what you were saying, but it gives me the opportunity to say that. Um, what I say about HIBs is, like, defer whenever you can to the person who is in the room. If you're not sure, like, if, if the guidance counselor, if the ABS is telling you, this kid was really upset. Maybe it doesn't come across well in the report. Maybe the report is not that detailed. But if someone who sat in the room with the person, you know, either said, this kid definitely knew what they were doing, or this kid was really upset, those are things that I would absolutely encourage you to defer to the administration on. Not even the administration, the person in the room. Um, the, you know, when the board is being asked to make a decision, ask whatever questions you need to. Ask whatever questions you need to. If you can't get that question answered, sometimes you are just going to have to sort of trust that the person in the room made a judgment call that they felt comfortable about. Those are the ones that I would say you don't second-guess. It's like a credibility determination. If you weren't in the room, it's harder for you to make it, you know? It's unsatisfying because you want to know that. But yes, as a board member, is the policy up to date? Is it being followed? And then what's the basis for the recommendation? You know, make sure you understand that. It's okay if you don't agree with it. You might agree with it, vote to affirm. You might not agree with it and still vote to affirm because you understand that the policy was followed. because you understand that the policy was followed. It was someone else's judgment call. If your judgment might've been different, that's okay. Sometimes you might still affirm. Sometimes you might reject. You know, these are the, and that's why I say this is one of the toughest things that you do as a board member because it's very uncomfortable. You know, you, you, you could be affirming a HIB where it's like, I know this kid probably didn't mean it, but this other kid was really upset by it. I don't feel good about it, but technically it follows this criteria. You know what I mean? Like it's really hard sometimes to make these decisions. And, and I think it's even harder sometimes to wrap your mind around, listen, this is really a bad situation. This kid got serious discipline and they deserved it, but it's just not a HIB. Like it does not meet these criteria. This parent's going to be really mad at us because they think we're saying their kid wasn't bullied. That's not what we're saying. We're saying it doesn't fit the specific legal criteria of harassment, intimidation, or bullying. Capital B bullying in New Jersey is different than lowercase b bullying.
Just to clarify on that point, right? And then I'm sorry because I'm not playing. Just don't give me an order in three. Um, so the regular meetings that we're having in closed session, and Dr. Moore reviews these, unless I have this wrong, we shouldn't really be looking at that and saying, was it a HIB or wasn't it a HIB? We should in that instance be saying, did the administration do the work that was appropriate to determine whether or not it was a HIB? But we don't actually make the determination unless it's an appeal coming to us.
I think that's right. Yeah. Uh, on appeal, you are being asked to second guess the determination. Ask whatever questions you need to be comfortable making that determination. When it's just being presented to you without an appeal, if you have questions, ask questions. It's okay to ask questions. That's how you learn. But yes, generally you just want to know, you know, was the process followed? Why, you know, why was this, you know, a thumbs up or thumbs down on HIB?
You're not hiring a person. You're not hiring a person. You're just making sure.
Right. And, and Jeff's going to give you the shorthand. He's going to be like, the distinguishing characteristic was this, the substantial impact was this, or, you know, this was really obnoxious, but there was no, you know, wasn't motivated by some, you know, a distinguishing characteristic. So there was, there was discipline imposed, but just not a HIB, right? Jeff is going to give you the shorthand on that. So you're not necessarily second guessing it in those situations, but I mean, I, I wouldn't say don't ask questions if you're curious, if you're not sure. Um, it, it's okay to want to understand. And then of course, if the appeal is before you.
Well, and just to, to add to that, when I'm preparing those conversations for closed session, I'm preparing them with the thought that I, I want to make sure that you know what the rationale was behind how the incident fit or didn't fit the requirements. Um, and the important piece of the process is that, that that serves is people giving me those decisions have to convince me that it's, you know, so, so that, I, I am presenting them to you with the goal of making sure that you understand this is why it fits. Um, there have been times in the state and districts where boards got very little information about HIBs.
It ha, it still happens. Some, some of my boards, there's like an Excel spreadsheet where very little information is updated, just to sort, it's like, almost like a tracking, you know, some of, I have some districts where they just get the outcome and they wouldn't get any details unless there's an appeal. Um, you know, so you guys actually get, and, and I, I don't say this just because I'm here in front of you. Your administration does a tremendous amount of work in trying to understand and justify these. And, and Jeff makes sure that that happens. And then he calls me if he's got questions and, you know, there's a lot that goes into this. And, and so the information is there for you guys to understand, which I think is really, it's valuable because this is hard.
I think the board always asks a hundred, one question, but you know, executive questions they run a make because you entertain all of our questions.
Well, I welcome it, not just entertain it. You know, I, I.
Welcome it.
And, and it's, it's valuable for me to, because you are additional minds in the room who may raise a question that will do this.
Your litmus test.
I need to go back and, and ask that question with that. And also know that new information can come up in a HIB that will cause it to be reopened. We don't see that very often. But that's a possibility that can happen as well, that new information arrives. Um, so you haven't seen it yet, but you may see it at some point this year where you're hearing a HIB multiple times because it had to be reopened after the revelation of new information. That can happen as well. That's neither here nor there. I just want to settle that dinner.
Yeah. Again, thank you all for your attention. I know I said an hour, but it was your questions, quite frankly, that made it beyond an hour. So I just want to put that out there, but always nice to see everybody.
Two seconds folks before I ask for a motion for a meeting, um, Saturday the 21st, retreat. Correct me if I'm wrong there, but we're starting at eight for my, my coffee.
Yeah.
Actually, it's going to start at 30, but at 8:30 is just kind of a meeting. We're getting in, settling in, chatting, whatever. So the meeting is, yeah, waking up. The meeting is set for eight, public meeting for the, we don't get totally 20 and we're going to run three hours, hold on, 11:30.
They will have 30, so.
11:30, so yeah. Um, the bulk of what we're going to be discussing is reviewing our goals. Uh, we typically have retreat in the summer, but we talked about how like years is a long time to go back and review our goals. So we're going to look at our goals that came out of August, our August retreat and see where we're at, what work needs to be done. It's going to be the bulk of what we do. We're also going to spend a little bit of time on board member orientation. We've had a lot of talk about that. Kane's been willing as provincial and just as the newest board member talking about like what might be lacking. So be really interested to hear from you guys as to, okay, you've got Dr. Moore, done this with Alicia, like what else do you feel like you're missing at this early stage? Um, if there's anything you want to share in advance of that, that I can get on the agenda with Judy Wilson, who's phenomenal, who's going to be running the retreat, like feel free to email me. Otherwise, just sort of be prepared to discuss any questions you may have or suggestions about, you know, what we can do better for you guys to bring it up to speed. So we will see each other next, then, and that will be before our next meeting. So retreats on Saturday the 21st and then our next actual public meetings, that Monday and Thursday. Um, and just so I'm sure Dr. Moore shared this review, but our meetings are typically Monday of the month for our public board meetings. And I think Cruz mentioned that our committee meetings are typically the second of the month, but once the committee serves sign, we'll, we'll get a schedule.
So we've been operating too on the assumption that we will not have committee meetings this month.
Yes.
We are prepared to behave as a board, as a committee, of a whole, with a draft agenda closer toward the 23rd. Um, so we, we might not have the opportunity of fifth committee meetings in there. So we'll have to just continue to do that step by step.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll talk about that. But even more important endeavor this month is going to be looking at the agenda for January 23rd, so you may not be having those committees.
And you'll be assigning committees.
In a couple of days. I need to process a little bit. Yeah. By next week.
So you're stuck.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow.
Um. Wait, this is tomorrow morning then?
No. Noel said I should have the committee assignments.
Sorry.
I was like, what?
Wait. I have meetings tomorrow.
Okay. Can I motion close out the meeting? A second? Okay. Long favor? All right. Thank you, everybody. Welcome you guys again. Looking for us on the 23rd.